Welcome, everyone. We'll begin the day with the work session with our county engineer Anthony Bargett regarding the county shop.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. So I just wanted to continue the discussion today on the airport shop location that we've been talking about. So in the past, we've had a couple of different meetings to discuss working with the airport and combining a building for services between Second Road Department and the airport. We've discussed going with possibly a six bay building that with one of the bays being a wash bay. So over the last couple of weeks, we've decided to bring in FEH just as a consultant to look at probable cost and give us a better estimate on what's going on out there. If it's okay, I would like to invite Christie and Gary up here to discuss the actual costs themselves and what they've explored on this.
I just have a question before that. How did we determine we were using FEH?
It just passed history of what, you know, we've used them for the West Campus. They have, they have a good, pretty good, I guess, polls or dial, dial on the polls as far as equipment or, you know, material costs and building costs. So we certainly are not committed to them going forward with any design. This is just strictly just concept and estimation.
And as I look at the number, the number is extraordinarily bigger than we talked about. So, I mean, I don't know how much more, I'm happy to listen, but I'm a no. I just, we're two and a half million dollars into a project to, so I need to have a substantial rework with the city of Dubuque about who benefits and all those things too. So.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have to look at the reality of the situation, you know, we, you know, out of the pandemic and the material shortages. You know, everything is up across the board, you know, so I think this is a real reality check for us. I'm not a building expert, so I, that's why I'd like to bring in FEH just to give us a handle on the estimation of this, this building. So this will be just a starting point, you know, we'll certainly beat this up pretty good today, I'm sure, and not make any final decisions. But, you know, we got to kind of figure out where to go from here.
But I'd also like to see some things put in memo form because we're going to have to be able to show a need and not a, you know, that this is a need. This is all, I think, been kind of oral discussion, like, wouldn't it be just a really good improvement, a good idea? I mean, we came to $800,000 and now we're looking at two and a half million and escalating probably from that. So I'd like to see us work this up as a capital project.
Yeah, and just kind of give you some comparisons. And certainly we weren't using necessarily 2019 numbers when we put together our estimates, but we, we did call, or Chris Soder and myself, we called. One of the previous contractors helped us with the Farley shop and just trying to get, get some estimations at that time. When we built the Farley shop, we were right around $45 a square foot, you know, looking at these estimates, we're, you know, not counting in the, the, the PH fees and some of these extra soft costs. About $170 a square foot. So we're three times higher than what we were just a few years ago.
Yeah, we're in those same numbers. So I saw that as well. You know, I'm definitely interested in learning. I think we've seen investment and receiver in turn in the Farley shop and in the West Campus shop. I think those are utilized well. I think they're serving the community and serving certainly our employees very well. So I'm interested in hearing your proposal, but to your comment, if there's two noes, we don't need to go any further. So I don't want to waste anybody's time. So I've heard one no right out of the chute. So if there's any other noes, let's get them on the table and then we can not waste people's time.
Well, you know, I'd say the largest need for Second Road Department is our, our maintainer operator that's, that's, that's now no longer part of the Key West DOT shop. He has vacated himself out of that building. He's now parking his machine outside of the airport little building that our, our truck actually parks in. So he's plugging into it, you know, during this cold weather time. So he's kind of getting by for now. If we don't put this building up this year, we're going to have to come up with some situation this fall to get him in some kind of building. Or else he's just going to be plugging in his machine and sitting outside all winter long, and that's, that's not good on machines either. So we need some kind of solution going into this fall slash winter for that one, one operator. The, you know, the truck driver, yeah, we can continue to operate out of that little building. You know, we have discussed that that building is, it's at the end of its life and then one good windstorm is going to take it down pretty quick. So, so, yeah, this is all about exploring. I'm not saying we're going to come to any decisions today. I just want to continue the discussion and certainly to your point, yes, we need to formalize this a little more in a memo format. I don't even know what to put in a, in a memo yet because this is just all over the board right now.
And I guess that's the reason for asking the questions like right now. So we need to get, oh, do we do this, right? So how, how do we do this? Two and a half million dollars, whether a public hearing is required or not, I want one. This needs to be not in your work session at eight fifteen in the morning, but in a highlight of the day where we might have more eyes on, including the press. So, I mean, we need to, this is a big project, maybe for, you know, we, we may think that it's just a shop. But it's, it's becoming a significant capital investment and I do think we need to work it up that way. So that we're, even with consultants, do we go out for requests for proposals? This isn't just an addition, it's, it's a significant improvement. So I just want to, if you're uncertain how to proceed, then that's a concern that I have. We should not go down the steps of not doing it correctly, but right now start making sure that we're building our file.
I think we, on the other side, I've been through a couple of these. So I was here with the Farley shop. I was here at the West Campus shop. You led those. You were the architect on those. Those went very well. Okay. So I think the board is, at least myself and our staff and our professionals that we consult, whether it's FEH or others, do this very well. I think it was just last Monday, you were talking about night meetings and we need to discuss big items in the light of day. We're here. So, you know, I think if there's another no, jump in, okay? But otherwise, you know, I, I think it's, I think we're very well experienced at doing this. And in my experience with the Farley shop, we even had, you know, went out to bids and I think we changed our bid. We learned from the first bid, modified, had a good project, did the same thing for the West Campus. So I would like to say I'm, I'm appreciative of your efforts and your efforts to date have been wonderful. And so I'm very supportive of this project and the process moving forward.
And I guess we'll talk about the Farley shop. In my time as a supervisor, there was a major renovation needed there due to humidity. So there's a great, in Anthony, you said, when I was on the board, probably should have maybe not done that piece myself. Maybe you should have looked at another piece, gotten another engineering perspective on the amount of humidity we're dumping into that same situation is going to happen here.
That's why we have them on board here.
Right. But was this the group that fixed the humidity issue that we had at Farley? I mean, that was, I don't know how much, hundreds of thousands to fix that.
So we brought in MEP engineers to, to help out with that, that design. I don't think we involved FEH at all on that, but so it was all mechanical in nature. You know, that big of a building, we learned, you know, putting that much moisture in the building, yeah, you have to exhaust it in a better format. So that's, that's built into this estimate, you know, we made sure that we learned from that situation. West Campus was built to exhaust in a proper way. So, yeah, we learned from the Farley shop. It's still a very good building. It serves its purpose out there. But, you know, it took a couple of steps to really get to what it needs to be.
And that's, that's my point. It's that we want to spend the time in the public to do this right. It's much bigger than I anticipated it would be.
Well, certainly, yeah, the increase in prices have taken way beyond what we ever expected.
So maybe we got to go back and again, address need and just, you know, make sure that it's, the need meets a two and a half million dollar plus, you know, opportunity.
So the overall need, you know, there was some vision building into this, I guess, you know, so we talked about the, the two employees that we currently have would be in there. And then there would be an extra bay for the airport, plus the wash bay. And then we, we wanted to possibly grow this with the other two bays for the potential south sub subdivisions that we serve for plowing. And maybe even like grow into the north subs as well. But we see that area possibly being, growing to a couple more employees to be more efficient in that, that corner of the county. You know, now we could pair that back. I think shaving off a bay or two isn't necessarily going to save you a whole lot of costs. I'd have to defer to them on what that would be. But, so there's a little bit of vision setting in this. It's probably built a little bit bigger than what it need, what we need now. But you get one shot at this and we decided, let's, let's try to take a look at this and how is it going to serve us going into the next 10, 20 years? And, you know, I want to seriously look at how can we be more efficient with our snow plowing and maintenance services throughout the year.
So I'm looking forward to all of that being in writing so that it's something that people can evaluate and see the reason why we're considering this.
Yep. Next step I take, be honest, media, I can do that. I can put it in a memo format.
And I think maybe Ed can be helping with that too. He can be a direct link to you to, you know, I don't expect you to be drafting the memos as we go along. But that's something that we didn't have. Ed is, is a great asset that we didn't have before. And that's just my preference when we're spending significant amounts of money that we have a written recollection of why and what we considered and what the process was.
I think also for me, I'd like to kind of know what, what is our hard ceiling number for budget? You know, what, what do we, what can we shoot for? If it's a million dollars, then I know, okay. There's a certain size building I need to fit in for a million dollars and I know where to direct my memo to. If it's a million and a half, two million, then, you know, that gives me some different directions. So maybe I just need to know more of a budget number of what we can really go after.
It's a good point, you know, so since you bring budget up, you know, we do have $2.2 million sitting in our long-term capital budget. And that's been there for quite a few years. And so I'm not a big proponent to tax and save. I like to put the tax dollars to use as evidenced by inflation, the longer that sits there, the less it's productive for taxpayers. So this would be for me aligned up very well for that types of projects. So I would not want to see this come out of your road budget. I'd like, want to see it come out of our capital improvement budget. And we have some funds in there. And if we need to supplement that with other funds, I think we're open. The other good news is we've got American Rescue Funds which potentially could, could serve this purpose as well. So, you know, I think this is a good first go around. Here's our initial needs. Here's our first offering after some considerable thought. And so I appreciate that effort. And once we kind of, you know, walk through it a little bit, we might be able to come and say, here's what we feel we could budget with. But right now, the county is in a very good financial position. And then from my vantage point, we've been there for the last series of years. It's, you want to put that money to use at the best and highest use. And I see this as one of those projects.
I'm not against the project. Obviously I had a little sticker shock when I saw this. I was substantially higher than what we had talked about. We're just at a discussion point. I mean, there's no decisions being made on it. So good with moving ahead, look at what we have for options. What are, what can we do? We do have the funding available. I agree with Ann. Obviously it's a big project. It's not going to be a eight fifteen in the morning. Yeah, you go do what you want. It's going to be, the public will have input on it. We're just trying to gather information at this point as far as I'm concerned.
Right. Would you like to hear from FEH on their estimating and whatever else?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I mean, I think information is good. I, I don't know if we're in a contract position where we were hiring them to do this. That might, again, it's a concern. I didn't expect, as I said this morning, FEH is coming. Well, how did that happen? That, so that's, you know, it, it's becoming a bigger project and I don't like being surprised that now we have consultants involved. I thought we were going back to just do some more scratching yourself and looking, you know, at greater need. Have we hired? Do we have a contract with?
We do not. No, they're, they're just strictly here on kind of retainer, you know, just on an as needed basis. I would say the, the scratching we've done thus far has been very inaccurate. You know, we originally put out there $860,000 for the, the budget and that comes way short, obviously. So, you know, but I thought it'd be prudent to bring them in just to give us some consultation so we can have some better information for you. Hopefully this is being a little conservative and overshooting a little bit. That's possible. But I'd rather give you the sticker shock first and then as opposed to bidding out and then seeing the real shock.
So again, we have FEH on an as needed basis. Is that, is there some other? Again, you know, it's maybe something that everybody knows and I don't, but do we have, okay.
We have no, we have no formal contract with them unofficial or, or formal to go with them, you know, we just have a history with them, with a working relationship. It's nothing different than IAW or design that, you know, we bring them in for, you know, various things with, whether it be a little rating of a bridge or to take a look at a building or something like that. So that's the way I look at it.
I'm fine with having you pull up. I have a few questions for you to do, I guess, so.
Didn't see it. So, no, we haven't submitted that to the board. Yeah, you can, you can certainly pass around if you'd like.
See.
So far, what we've had to do is put together a concept to see if we can get an FAA permit to even build this type of, type of project. So we're working with Todd and his team to go through that permitting, permitting process and then we can get a little serious, more serious after that. Once we know this is a okay thing to go with, with, with the airport.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Kristy Monk with FEH Design. Good morning. With regards to this opinion of probable cost, this is an opinion. It's not a bid. This is a conceptual design based on the drawing that we provided idea of what this would cost. So this is for a 12,000 square foot building. You're looking at the, the plan. What we did was we looked at a comparable building a few years ago that Gary had worked on that was of similar construction. And then we updated those numbers based on some more recent data that we, that we have on hand to propose $128 a square foot. That is a conceptual budget number that we thought was appropriate. To, and then we have robust contingencies involved on both the design bid side and the construction side. So you have 20% contingencies for a building construction top cost of $1.9 million. That's in line with what we're seeing. Now, this is steel construction and metal studs. So if you were to pivot to wood construction, you might save with regards to timing and how long materials might take to arrive. But we didn't see a significant benefit to switching to wood from a cost standpoint, at least at this point, given material prices. And then on the site work side, the structure deconstruction, we had talked with county staffs that they would be able to remove any structures on the site. And remove the, there is an old farmhouse that had been demoed and then pushed into the basement. So that would need to be removed. But you can see in the site work construction costs, we're not sure if there are any hazardous materials out there, if the farmhouse had been abated prior to deconstruction. So we do have some buffers in there for unexpected findings. And then we're anticipating, as you can see from the drawing, we've got a driveway. So we're proposing an apron kind of in front of each of the bay doors. I don't think I have any, I didn't bring my laser pointer. So in front of the bay doors would be a concrete apron and then the driveway into and out of the wash bay would be concrete. So that is accommodated in the site work construction cost. And then we do have anticipate future photovoltaics. So we do have accommodations for that. At least in the new construction portion of the project. And from a soft cost standpoint, we've got a significant technology number. That was a number that Nathan had provided previously for the building of a total of $175,000. So we put 50 of that in the building and then 125 as a soft cost owner provided outside the project scope number. And then we had previously talked at a meeting about doing, about the design process. And if we would be doing a typical design bid build or design build. So we do have a reduced proposed fee for architectural services to provide a basis of design documents that then would go out to contractors. I'd be happy to answer any questions or I can move over for Anthony with whatever you got.
You kind of covered what I was going to bring up about the wood frame, but I know wood is high now. So I'm sure there wouldn't be a whole lot of cost savings going with wood.
Need a lot more wood to offset the steel as well. I talked about it with our structural team. So you would definitely have more materials. They might be less, but you'd have more of them. Yep.
Are the numbers that you're talking about, are those the ones that were presented to us in our packet? That was included in the packet. Yeah, I saw the numbers. I just don't know if they're the same, but if they're from you and.
Yep. You very nicely did not provide our logo on that document. So apologies on that.
I have a question related to, and Todd might be able to chime in on this, related to access and then actual in and out related to the trucks for the county. Would they be going off, you know, just 61 or is Jekyll and Lane an option or not?
Morning supervisors, Todd Dulcing, Dubuque, Creel Airport. Yeah, so the only access would be off of Airport Road. There, I think you probably recall back in the day, there used to be an access road that it basically ends right there by the hangar on the left side. And then it went around the airfield, but that's since been abandoned. As a matter of fact, we're looking at a new taxiway project that will also encroach upon that area. So there won't be access to Jekyll from that side, at least at this point. Okay. I could just add too, so just to the content, we are looking at building a new hangar at the airport, which is very similar to the size of this building steel. And we are looking at a 35% increase over the last even just two years. So to go back to 2019, I'd have to do some figuring, but we're going through the same thing at the airport.
And then the, the back proposed salt shed that looks to be currently in an egg. Is that, is that, do you lease that? Is that owned by the airport right now and you're leasing that to an egg?
Correct. Yep. That is a part of our tillable lease ground, but we will be visiting with, if this is approved. We will visit with our tenant and remove a portion of that acreage from the lease so we can accommodate the salt building.
I guess my, my ask again, Anthony, for you is some of this in writing, we need to start seeing. So that I feel like I'm hearing a different story every time and the number just keeps getting bigger. And there's obviously discussions happening to the side that I'm not aware of. Obviously, that's not my job to micromanage the creation of this building, but it would be nice if there was something, you know, saying it began with this. This is the square footage. We thought it would be better to do, I mean, it's got, if it's going to grow, I think it needs to grow in some format that I can share with the community at large. So I would be looking for that the next time we're together. History, the formal identification of the needs, what we've considered to get to this. And, you know, in, and I know the airport is in a, I don't want a two and a half million dollar shed to a place where there's no airports. There's no airlines. So that, you know, that's the sensitivity of this, of this too. So we can talk about that here or offline, but.
Well, maybe before you jump in, so I also, I appreciate the airport being here and I know you have a stake in this. I'm, you know, first and foremost, looking at to do counties' needs. So maybe, Anthony, can you address that? Is this a need we have with the county and is that the primary purpose of this building?
Yeah, we certainly have a need. It's not, if it was just us doing this, it would not be a $2 million need. You know, we could, if it was just housing the, the two employees, you know, we could build something a lot smaller and a lot more cost effective. But, but with this relationship with, with the airport and the potential to build a vision of, you know, growing this area, serving the community or serving the taxpayers better than that part of the county, that's why we're, you know, we're, we're proposing what we're proposing. But certainly the need is the, the maintainer operator used to come out of the DOT Key West location. That's no longer available. They've, they've since moved to a brand new location, which we're not a part of. And like I say, we can't have possible negotiations and maybe try to get them in there as well. That could be one of the back to drawing board discussions we could have. But then there's still the truck driver who is in that old building at the airport that eventually that, that building's going to have to come down. So we'll have to deal with that truck driver as well. So we, we have two, two employees that are kind of in limbo right now. And then, like I said, if we could grow this to a couple more employees in the future, that's, that's why we're proposing what we're proposing here.
Those two employees go in and out of, I mean, the West Campus is enormous. There's no, the space there is tremendous. Could they not go in and out of our West Campus shop?
It's really the distance and time it takes to get there to that territory. As far as the airport, that's about almost center of the territory for the maintainer operator. If you were to put them up at West Campus, his response time is, is, you know, you're probably adding 45 minutes at least. And then, so you'll have sections of the county, the far southeastern area, like over by St. Catherine's and that area where it's, he's taking forever to get there. And then, you know, then, you know, the public's not being served very well, in my opinion. So it's, it's, you know, we've talked about, okay, could he possibly come out of West Campus? But it's just too far away for those two employees. Even to respond to the south subs with our, and that, that person comes out of the West Campus, that's a little bit of a reach as well. So, you know, that one, we can, we can work around. The response time isn't that great for that one, but certainly the maintainer operator and that other truck driver that serves that area down there. I just, I don't see that being prudent to go up to West Campus.
Where else are, in what other small communities do we store similar equipment?
We have the Bernard location, although we, we rent that location from the fire department there. And it's just, I think, a two or three bay little building that, you know, that's, that's pretty much maxed out for what we have in there now. And again, that's a bit of a reach to that territory as well. So we really don't have any other land or buildings up in that area up by the airport that, that we can really go to. We'd have to start afresh and find a piece of ground somewhere.
We would build a two bay.
Or three. You know, if you, if you think about the maintainer machine, the truck, the truck, and then probably like a loader. Because you'd want to solve, bend out there as well. So I'd say like a three bay. If you did not want to grow that into a future subdivision extension there. You know, you'd probably want to look at maybe like a four bay at that point.
The rough estimated acreage that would be used for, for that, any guesstimates? Someone hold you real hard to it? Is it three quarters and one?
What would you say, David, that you'll need?
I'd probably say a baker.
Baker, yeah.
The salt shed was just going to be a, I can't think of what it is.
Hoop building? Yeah. It'd be like a farm textile building. Yeah.
Could that be moved to where the old shop is now that would be torn down or stay out of that?
We discussed at one time, I, what is access? Yeah, it's, it's kind of that swing getting into those bays that might get a little tight right there. We also discussed, you know, you don't, we want to try to stay away from the prevailing wind coming out of that west northwest. And the way that those doors are facing and the hoop building, that's a nice protection from that prevailing wind. I guess if you turned it, I guess you could face it south there where that old building is as well. But there's, there's a, those, there's already some existing bunkers and some equipment parked over there. Be a little difficult to kind of maneuver around there. those, there's already some existing bunkers and some equipment parked over there. It'd be a little difficult to kind of maneuver around there. We did discuss that our crew could do a lot of this grading, the prep work there. There is a bit of a hill that dives down to the north there that we could, we ourselves could do all the surveying and grading and prep work for that. And then the contractor would just have to come in and do the excavation for the concrete.
Something I've learned from the state, talking to the governor, all of those costs should be in this. You just can say that they're going to be provided by the county, but we should put in our costs as well. So that when someone asks, I can say, well, county provided, you know, whatever that's going to be $400,000 with the work. So I mean, I, I think that should be up there as part of the cost. It's certainly going to be employee time. I mean, we're, we're looking at a substantial project. When you look at it from that perspective, we're maybe in a $3 million project.
I don't think we'll have that much in, we won't have $400,000 in grading.
Demolition.
Well, we really won't have much for demolition. I don't, did we build in demolition into the, for that little building in this? We did not know. I think you were talking about doing that in the future sometime, right? Yeah.
I saw demolition.
Well, there's structured deconstruction, which is where the old house foundation is.
Yeah.
How much is that?
Zero.
It's what? But is it a zero because we weren't valuing in fully time? Pardon me?
It's listed on the estimate as being by the county. So we had talked with, well, at least that was structured demolition related to the old farmhouse. So that is listed as a zero. So based on your comment, that would need to change to incorporate county time for that.
Other thing I see is lots and lots and lots of proposed driveway, is that concrete?
Initially, we would leave that as rock just to save on some of the cost. Like Chrissy said, there would be a concrete apron in front of the building for the doors themselves. But otherwise the, the driveway itself would be rocked just to try to save on some of those costs.
Well, and water, right? Water control. I mean, we're, but this is a the large amount of pavement.
Sure. Yeah, it is. Pretty small compared to the airport and the runways, but increase. I have no
Like you said, Anne made a comment that if the airport closes, so and I think you're talking about air service. So our air service makes up about 2% of our total aircraft operations. So, you know, if air service were to be suspended or, or, you know, canceled or whatever, the airport would not close. So, you know, we would still maintain our runways, taxiways, aprons, buildings, you know, 1300 acres. And, and who, who in our community benefits from those and actually are your clients? Yeah. So there's, well, not only in our community, but we also have transient aircraft that fly in and do business at the airport as well. Companies like John Deere, AY McDonald. Yes, multiple as well as private aircraft owners as well. So So the, the business community does need and rely upon your airport being function. Oh, absolutely. And even per our FA guidance, our grant assurances to receive, well, while you have commercial service, we receive a million dollars a year that we have to maintain the airfield up to part FA part 139 standard. So even without air service, we still have to maintain that. So yeah, the airport won't close. I just want to make sure that's on the record here.
It depends on what your perspective is of the airport. If I'm higher education and the airport is how I bring students in and their parents to come see my campus and there's no airlines in, the airport's closed. Now I understand you're open because you do other facets. Apparently 98% of other things are occurring, but I, I just, there's a bit of a disconnect, I think in the community. Well, the airport's not going to close. Well, anything that industry I work with wants to do, it's in jeopardy of being eliminated.
Yeah. Airport terminal, you know, operations would be suspended absolutely, but the airport runways, taxiways, aprons, buildings, all business as usual, I guess is where I'm going.
But in my example, in my example, a future Clark student would use none of that.
Yeah, yeah, correct. To fly into, to visit Clark for a student, if air service was suspended, they would have to use a supporting aircraft around it, around a view. That's correct.
And driving.
And drive, correct. Your need on the airport shop be any less if terminal service was this as well? No, yeah, as I mentioned earlier, I think in one of the previous meetings, we're deconstructing our way out of storage just to build more hangers. So then, yeah, and you know, we did a little tour. The need is, is, is there for us to have another bay. Yeah, maybe talk about your need a little more if you could. Yeah, like I said, we, we, if, to build one more hangar, I don't think we have it on our thing. We have to deconstruct our old airport maintenance shop because that has access direct to the current general aviation apron. So we're going to have to take equipment out of that as well. And we just don't, we're, we're 100% at our capacity for storage.
And remind me of the fiscal arrangement we have between the city. The property, this land it will be, is owned and will remain in the ownership of the city of Dubuque.
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah. We cannot sell that land for FA guidance.
And then will we be renting the space from you at some time?
Yes, that would be a land lease. That would be, the cost would be offset for whatever base that we're able to occupy. And if, I don't have the documents in front of me, but I want to say it was 15, 20 years or something like that at the old cost. Okay, 22 years.
My memory is that that's in writing somewhere, but I don't know that that's true.
That was in a previous
Seeing it somewhere was like 20 to 25 years, something to that effect that
So we probably need a an airport shop file where all the documents can be drawn up to be referred back to.
Well, I guess we're here to say that we have a need. This is how do we get there? So we can sort of work on a memo to formalize all this, but it'll go together for you. I guess if you have any direction on budget, you think, okay, hey, $2 million is not going to work. If you want to let me know something different, then that'll give me some guidance. But otherwise I'll just have to proceed with offering this up to you guys.
I guess probably just go with this and probably if you can downsize one bay, something like that, kind of a
Two options?
Couple of options at least.
Where are we for needing to do a public hearing? To do something like this?
I'd certainly support that as well. So I think you've got consensus to move forward. If we want to have a public hearing, I would support that.
And the other thing I would, I would say, and again, I think Todd, I value what you're doing in, in such, but citizens are, are not going to appreciate a $3 million improvement to the airport when there is no air service. And so that, this doesn't bring us air service or keep air service, right? This is, this is an enhancement and improvement the county needs to make for the county's purpose. And if it benefits a strategic partner, that's even better. But we do have to maybe walk this a bit to make sure that when the airline service decision comes, I think that is going to happen in three months, four months, five months, six months. There's a disconnect. The public is not aware that we are in danger of losing air service. That hasn't been communicated to the public. So I don't know when that piece is going to happen where citizens become aware that they need to fly Dubuque. You know, I was with Honor flights on, on Saturday and they get in and they leave Dubuque and yada, and it's just perfect. And I said, well, imagine a place where you weren't leaving Dubuque. How could that be? So is there something about that, Todd? Where are we going with informing citizens?
Yeah. So we currently, and I'm sorry, I know we're getting a little off topic here as far as building, but we currently have a fly Dubuque first marketing campaign to inform and educate the public. We have a launch page on our website. We've done digital. We've done print, paper, yeah, you know, all the, all the marketing. We set up a geo fence. I want to say it's like a 30 mile geo fence. So when anybody searches anything about aviation, they bring up a fly Dubuque first campaign advertisement where they can click on it to learn more. We're meeting one-on-one with our business partners throughout the community, the chamber and I. We've got our air service task force that meets once a month. We'll be meeting this Friday. Kevin is your representative on that and hopefully sharing the information with you all as far as the, the power points that we provided the air service task force. Sure. I just got back from an air service conference in Arizona on Friday. And there was 46 airports that were represented there and they're all saying the same thing. It's all about retaining air service right now. So are there airport or airlines that are pulling out of airports? Yes. We are not on that list at this time, but you know, I mean, it's always a possibility for the last, you know, every years that, how many years that the airport's been open. It's not just, you know, the next month or two or whatever. It really comes down to a use it, you know, you, you need to use it to retain and then also expand. So in the past, we've always used fly Dubuque first. There was a campaign way back when, a use it or lose it kind of campaign. But, but yeah, we're, hopefully we're getting the word out through all of these entities to inform the public of what's, what the current status of aviation is. And it's not something that just Dubuque can control. You know, we control the rates and charges, but we don't set the airfare fees. We don't set the schedule. We can't say if they're going to come and go. But we can get out there and promote to use your local regional airport as, as much as you possibly can. And the county actually submitted a, not an ordinance, but a, a policy, internal policy to at least look at the Dubuque Regional Airport first when traveling. So you all have been a, a part of the solution.
Unaware of that.
That was part of the travel or travel policy approved. Kevin and I had worked on that, presented that probably a month or so ago.
Right. But you didn't highlight that piece.
Yeah, we, we just changed the wording where if, I think if costs were the same, that they, the policy requires that you fly out of Dubuque unless there's a significant cost savings flying elsewhere.
Correct. And when, when looking at the definition of cost savings, by the time you pay mileage and parking, traveling to a airport in the area, oftentimes Dubuque Regional Airport is more cost effective. So in an effort to not only support the airport and its operations, but to also make some reasonable financial sense, we added that to the travel policy.
And then when you addressed that with department heads, did you tell them that the reason we made that change is because we're in danger of losing our air service?
Uh, we did not.
So that's, I mean, that's my point that people, people don't know, they don't know that they're supposed to be doing something different. You know, that
Yeah, we're, we're doing our best to get that word out. There's 256 airports nationwide that well, I guess I hope they're not having this conversation because that would, you know, be better up for us because there are competition. So yeah, if it, if it isn't reaching someone, that's why we asked for, you know, during your leadership and when you're out talking to the community to help us spread the word to check out our website, check out the fly to be first campaign and, and learn what it's all about. And, and you're right, even on there, we have a true cost calculator where you can put in your airfare from Madison or Cedar Rapids or Moline, and you can put Dubuques in there and it will calculate all those costs out for you to show the true, true travel costs. So
I think you have some direction from the board. We'll keep it moving forward at time being and see what we can come up with.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that's about all I have for today. So I think we're right at nine o'clock anyways.
You're right at nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you. Nine o'clock, we'll call the board of supervisors in the session for the April 4th, 2022 meeting. Need to get one, I think. We'll start the meeting with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do not.
All right, we'll move to our proclamations. We have three proclamations today. Each supervisor will read one. I will begin with the child abuse prevention month. Proclamation, April 2022, child abuse prevention month. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem that can be prevented. And whereas our children are, are most valuable resources and will shape the future of Iowa. And whereas child abuse can have long psychological, emotional and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community and faith, faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies and families. And whereas all members of a community benefit from creating conditions that support strong and healthy families. And whereas the communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best events, defense for our children and families. Now therefore, we, the Dubuque County supervisors, to hereby proclaim April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Dubuque County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicate dedication ourselves, dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Proclamation adopted this fourth day of April, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for child abuse prevention month. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Do we have anyone to speak on behalf of this proclamation?
I am Melanie Dell and I am employed at St. Mark Youth Enrichment, which we serve kindergarten through fifth grade students. And I am also the treasurer of the Prevent Child Abuse Council and have been for eight years, I think. So anyway, we appreciate this. We look forward to continuing service in this county. We do a lot of, thank you. Fun things in the community. We partner with the schools. We partner with our child services. We partner with protecting children's services throughout the different counties, kind of around us that partner together for some educational opportunities. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Would you like to get a picture with the Okay, that's fine. Okay. The next proclamation will be sexual assault prevention month and Supervisor Wickham will read that.
Yes, proclamation. Ready? Proclamation, April 2022, sexual assault awareness month. Whereas the sexual assault affects women, children and men of all racial, cultural and economic backgrounds. And whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also associated, may have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders and suicide. And whereas sexual assault can be devastating, not only to the survivor, but also the family, friends and community of the survivor. And whereas, since no one person, organization, agency or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant others, and support those agencies providing services to survivors. Now therefore, we, the board of supervisors in in Dubuque County, on behalf of all the staff and citizens of Dubuque County, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as sexual assault awareness month.
In Dubuque County, on behalf of all the staff and citizens of Dubuque County, do hereby proclaim the month of April, twenty twenty two, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In Dubuque County, Iowa, encourage all citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence. This proclamation adopted this fourth day of April, twenty twenty two.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the sexual assault. Prevention Month proclamation, all in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Jay. Do we have anyone that wishes to address the board on that? Go to the podium, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah McKenzie. I'm an advocate with the sexual assault advocate with River View Center. This is just starting out. I started in January as an intern, now transitioning into full time. At River View Center, we support advocates through medical, medical advocacy, legal advocacy and personal advocacy. And as well as finding them housing, insurance, transportation, things like that. And we really appreciate you all today recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month to support survivors of sexual violence. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next, we have the National Public Health Week proclamation and Supervisor McDonough will present that.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate having a proclamation that is fun to read and about interesting work. Whereas the week of April fourth through tenth, two thousand twenty two, is National Public Health Week. And the theme is public health is where you are. And whereas since nineteen ninety five, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsoring of National Public Health Week. Has educated the public policymakers and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas US life expectancy dropped from two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen. In the longest sustained decline since the Great Recession. And only in two thousand eighteen began to increase again. US life expectancy then dropped again in twenty twenty two by a full year. Which is the largest drop in life expectancy since nineteen forty three. Whereas there is a significant difference in health status such as obesity, poor mental health and drug use. Among people living in rural areas compared with people living in urban areas. And this variance increases because rural residents are often more likely to face social determinants that negatively impact health. Such as poverty, transportation barriers and lack of economic opportunity. And whereas a person's health status can differ drastically by zip code. Due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community context. Access to healthy foods, access to education and access to healthcare. Whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand and recover. From the impact of a full range of health issues, including disease outbreaks such as the COVID nineteen pandemic. Measles, natural disasters and disasters caused by human activity. And whereas public health action, together with scientific and technological advances. Have played a major role in reducing and in some cases eliminating the spread of infectious disease. And in establishing today's disease surveillance and control systems. And whereas preventable risk factors such as. Physical inactivity, poor nutrition, tobacco use and excessive alcohol use are leading causes of chronic disease. And six in ten US adults have a chronic disease and four in ten have two or more. And chronic diseases cause seven out of every ten deaths annually in the United States. Whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has illuminated and exasperated racial inequities. And a growing number of local, state governments and public health leaders have declared racism a public health crisis. Now for the now therefore, the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, by virtue of authority invested in us. By the laws of Dubuque County, do hereby proclaim the week of April fourth through tenth, two thousand twenty two. As National Public Health Week, two thousand twenty two in Dubuque County, Iowa. And call upon the people of Dubuque County to observe this week. By helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers and leaders to better understand the value of public health. And supporting great opportunities to adopt preventative lifestyle habits in light of this year's theme. Public health is where you are. Proclamation adopted this fourth day of April, two thousand twenty two.
I will make a motion to approve the proclamation.
And I will second. We have a motion and a second to approve the National Public Health Week proclamation, all in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Andrew, would you look down, address the board?
Good morning. I'm Sandra Larson. I'm the current chair of the. Board of Health for Dubuque County, and I'm happy to be here this morning. Thank you so much for adopting this proclamation. Such important information contained in this proclamation and all true and all affected by our Department of Health here in Dubuque County. As well as the Board of Health. The proclamation is important to recognize the enormous work that the Department of Health and other entities in the county did during the pandemic. And the enormous amount of work that we have left to do to make our county healthier and more prepared next time. Very important in this proclamation that Supervisor McDonough just read. But I want to reiterate that we've had the largest drop in life expectancy since the nineteen forties. We can impact that. Here in Dubuque County with your help. You, you, the Board of Supervisors have been very helpful to the Board of Health. And we appreciate that and we ask for your continued help as we grow. Also of importance, rural areas are negatively impacted by many factors that we can impact. So I want to thank you again. I want to remind you that the Department of Health and the Board of Health is here to help the county become healthier. And I'd also like to thank those who work in public health and other health entities here in the county. But I'd also like to thank the citizens of the county. Do you know that we have one of the highest vaccination rates in our state? We have over seventy percent of eligible people to get vaccinated. They have been vaccinated. Now, how often can you get seventy percent of the people to do something? So really, we should be patting ourselves on the back, although we want more people vaccinated. So if you're not vaccinated, get vaccinated. If you're not boosted, get boosted. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andrew. Anyone wanting to get pictures with their proclamations could come to the front.
Thank you for coming. We're not going to do a big group picture. I will tell you too, this is blew out week two for Prevent Child Abuse. So we're going to have, you're going to see pinwheels around and people blue, so look at us. Have some good blue going. Thank you.
Right here, it'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
We'll move to the consent items. We have a conservation exemption. I'm sorry. Have approval in minutes of the March twenty eighth, twenty twenty two meeting.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the March twenty eighth meetings. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we go to consent items. We have a conservation exemption, Comer parcel.
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Auditor Drago. I think Billy Selby is on the call. This was forwarded to me from him. If you have any questions. He can answer. Otherwise, we respectfully recommend that you approve this consent item.
If we've ever done this, have we?
I don't recall doing it. Billy's on and would just want to give us some context.
Yeah, yeah. Good morning, Supervisors. That one came in from Brian Preston. It is a slightly different. Approved process and a lot of the exemptions we have. I don't honestly know a whole lot about it. Brian, Brian, that is when you're looking at our force reserve. I had to get some approval from his office. And then it was brought to our guys. Off on it. To my knowledge, once Brian, Brian, it should be pretty much good to go. We don't have any action to it, but I want to make sure we're going through the proper procedures since it said Chair signs that.
Should table. Motion to table.
Need more information on it or what?
Yeah, I don't have any context. I don't think I've ever done this before. I don't, Brian Preston is not here. I don't have any context. I don't, I don't feel like my questions were answered because I don't have any context to developing.
I can definitely work with Brian to figure out, get some more context on that.
Maybe it could be a brief work session at some point.
Okay. There is a motion to table. There's no second. Or discussion. Looks like it's a two acre parcel that would qualify for the forced. Covers tax taxes exemption, sorry.
Yeah, Supervisors, this is the auditor again. I think this is a pretty unique situation, but this does fall within the. Conservation and wildlife area. They're simply looking for a. Reduction based on this, on the information that's up on the screen. Supervisor Wickham, have you run these through the board at any point?
Other, not specifically this one, I don't recall, but we've had discussions related to conservation. For participation in the inspection process where they go out and inspect timber and other areas. And it appears from the email that that's what occurred here. I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
I will second that. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent item for the. Conservation exemption. All in favor signify by aye.
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 May.
All opposed. May. Here. Next, we have the procurement procedures. Have notice to bidders for culvert replacement on various roads. Project L dash C two, three parentheses, one dash seven, three dash three, one. Bids would be due April twenty second and would be opened at the night meeting April twenty fifth. Leave those culvert replacements affect specs Ferry Road, Middle Road. Flanders Lane and Bennettville Road.
I'll make a motion to approve the notice to bidders on the various roads.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to approve the notice of bidders for the culvert replacements on various roads. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Actually, I've noticed the bidders HMA resurfacing and culvert replacements on Flanagan Road and James Road. Project LF M. Dash P two, three parentheses, five dash seven X dash three, one. Those bids would be due April twenty second also, and it will be opened at the night meeting on April twenty fifth.
Motion to approve the notice to bidders.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. To approve the notice to bidders, all in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. To go to public hearings, there are no public hearings for this meeting. We have no Platts for approval approval at this meeting. We have action items. First would be a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies and assistants. Believe there were three positions on there, one for Sunny Crest, permanent full time victim victim witness coordinator for the. County Attorney's Office and a permanent full time Assistant County Attorney.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the hiring of deputies, assistants and clerks.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants and clerks. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a duplicate warrant for Kel-Tec.
To approve the duplicate warrant.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the duplicate warrant for Kel-Tec. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary right away documents for the culvert replacements.
Chair, hold on to Kel-Tec for a minute because I have a question under that end. We didn't quite, we didn't vote yet. So I think we're still in discussion on Kel-Tec.
Okay, sorry.
In this, just a question to the auditor. This duplicate warrant, not very much time had passed. Do we have a kind of a policy, how long we wait for something that's lost or not properly credited before we issue a duplicate warrant?
We do. The policy can vary anywhere between sixty and ninety days. In this case, we received communication from Chief Deputy Reniker and decided to move forward with this due to the amount. And the fact that we had verified that the original was never received.
Okay, and but usually with sixty to ninety days.
Correct.
It seemed like it always pretty fast, so.
We like to get people paid. Yeah, and that was a pretty large dollar amount, the largest I've ever seen. Maybe a record.
So we did vote on that or did we? They had a motion and a second, all in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary right away documents for the culvert replacements on their various roads. Project L dash C two, three parentheses, one dash seven, three dash three, one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to prove the necessary right away documents. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary right away documents for the HMA resurfacing and culvert replacements on Flanagan Road and James Road. Project LF M dash P two, three parentheses, five dash seven X dash three, one.
Motion to approve.
And I will second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the right away documents. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the plans and specifications for the culvert replacements on various roads. Project L dash C two, three parentheses, one dash seven, three dash three, one.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the plans and specifications. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the plans and specifications for the HMA resurfacing and culvert replacements on Flanagan Road and James Road. Project LM LF M dash P two, three parentheses, five dash seven X dash three, one.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the plans and specifications for the resurfacing of Flanagan Road. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on to communications. We'll move on to communications. So we have continuing disclosure review memo, Dubuque County.
This is a memo from Dorsey and Whitney regarding our refunding process. We're going to have a work session for about five minutes and a few minutes. This report will basically show that we are meeting or exceeding all of our reporting requirements for all of our existing bonds. If it was a report card, we'd get all As and a gold star.
Good. Thank you.
Motion to receive and file the correspondence.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to receive and file the disclosure review memo. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a minor management plant, Jim and Tony Schultz. Change to the MMP Record Farm North.
I guess same motion I had intended to cover all of them.
And the disabilities resignation, okay.
Communications.
Take them all in one.
And I will second that approval of our receiving file on all communications, A, B and C.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Go to appointments, open vacancies, informational only. There are no personnel requisitions for approval at this meeting. We'll go to the public comments section. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries and Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone?
We do not.
Okay.
Supervisors, regarding number 12, I would request that we table this until the, towards the end of the meeting. Technically by Iowa code, we need to perform the canvas after 12 PM.
Fair enough. Motion to table item number 12, the canvas of the special election.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to table the special election canvas. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Gives everybody time to come into the city? Is that what it does from a day gone, a bygone era?
Not quite sure what the purpose of that little bit of code is, but we like to follow it when we.
I agree. We always like to follow the code.
Here we have nine twenty-five.
We'll make a motion to recess for five minutes.
Have a motion and a second to recess for five minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
If you're in recess till nine thirty-five. Supervisors back in the session. Begin with the work session with our auditor regarding refunding of the landfill bonds.
Good morning, everybody. So with our refunding process, we've moved to the point where we are getting ready to issue bonds. However, we have reached a point with interest rates where it is currently not feasible for us to continue this process where the rates currently stand. So we are in a holding pattern right now to wait and see if interest rates will continue to drop back down at any point. There are a number of less than, less than wonderful things that would need to occur for rates to drop down. So in one respect, the fact that the economy is doing a little better is good. On the other term, we're not probably going to be looking at refunding these bonds anytime in the near future.
Refinancing?
Correct. Refunding, refinancing, same.
You just keep the money.
Yeah, no. There is no charge to the county for the services thus far.
If we're not going to refund at this time because it's an unknown, that means.
Refunding is the term you use for refinancing bond debt. So while refunding sounds great that we're going to be getting a bunch of money back, it's simply like a refinance for general obligation bonds.
Correct. Did not know that.
So where we stand now is there will be some filing fees and some outstanding charges that are going to be picked up by the landfill. The county will not be liable for any dollars and Dorsey and Whitney and DA Davidson do not get paid unless the refunding is completed. So while we have all the documents ready to go, we will look for a time in the future that interest rates are viable for us to, to be able to refinance that debt and save a little bit more than, than a couple bucks. This is where we'd be right about now if we move forward, so.
Penciled in on your agenda. I think that might be a while.
We'll hold our breath, yes.
Or never.
Thank you.
That all you had, Kevin?
Yes, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Approve that other document or the communication.
Thank you.
Along, we'll have an update on our Dubuque County brain health fund balance projects. Our Director of Disabilities, Dr. Anne Cameron Williams, welcome.
Here, is there a volume we can use?
Button? Technology.
That's better.
It is much better. I was wondering why it was so quiet. Let me start over. Thank you. Good to see everybody this morning. Just reporting briefly on the status of expenditure and anticipated expenditures for all of the mental health fund balance projects that were approved by this body as well as the East Central Region Regional Governing Board during this fiscal year. Pleased to present the information that was given to me by the organizations. All organizations that receive funding anticipate spending down the full amount of their award. One of the reasons that we were looking at perhaps a more extended conversation was what might Plan B be? Should an organization say, we're not in a position to spend down these, these awards? In that case, then reallocation of those funding amounts could be considered by this board and the regional governing board. I do not believe at this point with the knowledge that has been provided that Dubuque County needs to consider reallocation plans. However, we still have roughly three months to go for the rest of the fiscal, the rest of the fiscal year. On Friday, actually I think it was just last week, it might have been Thursday, the region did come up with a process to consider requests for reallocation for fund balance that don't necessarily tie up enormous amounts of time in this body or at the regional governing board body. More on that will be provided as that information is presented to the regional governing board meeting later this month, and I will be sharing that information with you as well. Any questions that you might have?
Anne, thank you for the update. It was helpful. So also, thank you. I really enjoyed working with you and it was wonderful to be at the regional governing board last week and for Dubuque County to have organization and to be aware and monitoring all things that the region was encouraging. The other eight counties should be doing as well. So I, I appreciate your, your skills and just really staying on top of this and tracking it. Of course, that's, that's very helpful. I have a request for you to do something that will help this board. There's some discussion about whether or not we will in the future be able to use purchase of services funding or any other funding source to assist in projects that were similar to these fund balance projects. Do you, do you know what I'm asking?
During this fiscal year or post in fiscal year 23? Those are things I do not know at this time. I will, will stay tuned for CEO May Hension to provide us with that information. I know the region is amply blessed with resources moving forward.
Well, it won't keep the excess hub open, the resource allotment. So we need to find a way. That's a communication piece that it's part of the fund balance in the sense that these are projects we've identified that we wish to spend local money on. And if there needs to be a second serving of local money on these projects, can we do that through purchase of services, through other funding mechanisms? And that is an unknown, as you state. And I would like to be working toward the known.
Duly noted, and I will have that conversation with May and see what the plans might be for moving forward if there's a a new processor for the region that would support Dubuque County initiatives similar to how fund balances have done in the past. But I'll stay on that and report back.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jay.
Thanks for doing the legwork, getting all the documentation and the verifications from the different award recipients. So appreciate that.
Let me see. May is saying here, by state code, all services that support mental health disability services must be spent out of the regional services fund for fiscal year 23 and beyond. So that's part of your answer. And I guess the second part would be what might be a process for for a different kind of project to approach the region for funding.
Right. So the lawyer in me says that's a further discussion. I see great.
Further. And I would like also just to note that one of the reasons that we're so well organized, or I appear to be in front of you, is that we have some outstanding organizations on this list that were responsive, got back to us or me and had, you know, if they had questions. So I really wanted to note their participation in this is what we're lucky, lucky to have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Moving on, we'll begin our work sessions to discuss the externally RPA applications. We'll start with Holy Family Catholic Schools.
Like the mics on. All right. Morning, everybody. My name is Phil Warman, Chief Administrator for Holy Family Catholic Schools.
Hi, I'm Liz Ernst. I'm the Program Director for the Early Childhood Programs.
We're here before you to talk about early childhood on the North End. And Holy Family Catholic Schools is the, is a leader in childcare for the city. And we are spread out across town, but in particular, our focus is on the North End with the Holy Ghost facility. Slide please. We serve birth to age 10 children, you know, approximately in our most recent count, over 820 children being served by our, in our, in our schools. What we want to do for our goal here is to finish a restoration project, quite honestly, and an expansion project on the North End for our children. And so if we keep going through the slides here, we are in a terrific position to serve the needs of that community. You know, we know that 60% of the children served on the North End are free and reduced, but we serve all walks of life. We have a strong, you know, we have strong enrollment from different businesses on the North End and things of that nature. What we're looking at right here is, is that we want to expand what we've got going on here and, and really dig into the disparities that are across the city. You know, we, we know that the North End's been labeled as a childcare desert. We know that women and men need to find affordable childcare and they want to send their kids to a place where they know that they're going to be loved and cared for and brought up in that safe environment. And so that's what we aim to do. Slide please. The reason why we're able to offer so much childcare is that this was formerly a school. So Holy Ghost Elementary School is one of the largest schools in the state of Iowa, quite honestly. It is built in the 1950s and if you've driven past it, you just have to go down the road. It looks just the same as it was in this picture taken in the 1960s. And so although we have early childcare in it now, we're still in great need of getting it up to where it needs to be, to be serving our littles. They have a quite a different need. When we look up here, we know that by doing some of the renovations that we're proposing today, that we're going to be able to extend that and make this just a warm welcoming place for, for all of them. Slide please. And so here is what we look at our current capacity of who we serve now. I like to focus in on the infant care as we're going to grow that quite a bit by doing this expansion. We know that infant care, dropping care
Thank you.
and the different hours are incredibly important to what the, the city's goals are. But that gives you an idea of what we're going to get done through these different grant opportunities. Slide. So we're going to have a state of the art 21st century beautiful place on the North End when we complete the Holy Ghost Project. We think that it can be a source of pride, and we think it can also be a draw for for businesses and families to go there and call that home. We know that we're also going to, in this process, create 30 new jobs. And I'll say that they're good paying jobs, you know. We'll talk later a little bit about, we just received the stabilization grant money like everyone else in the early childcare did, and we had the opportunity to just put that toward our buildings or to put that toward our people and put every dollar toward our people. There's no good to have beautiful buildings if you don't have workers there caring for your kids. And so this is something that's very important to us. Now, future plans, we also want to look at doing a drop in care as we know that's a priority for the city. We're also exploring extended hours for childcare at Holy Ghost to see if if that can, we can in partnership with our our businesses, offer that service that they so badly need. Now, this is going to kind of take you through the the grants that we've already already received and give you, I believe, a compelling, are compelling ask for what we need to finish off this project, right?
So prior to our first grant, this is one of our classrooms. And so you can kind of tell it's dark and dated. So if you want to just keep heading through, it's not quite equipped for what what we need. Again, this is the hallway. Restrooms were outfitted for elementary students, and so we no longer need these restrooms. We need more convenient restrooms for for young children. So our entryway, you can't really see it on this angle, but the the railing is way too low. So a child could trip and fall over that because, again, it was built so many years ago. Our exterior here, again, it looks exactly the same as it did in that picture in 1950. But also it's starting to to leak and cause problems with the heating and cooling. So just want to get that buttoned up. This is our entryway. You know, we want people to be proud when they walk into our school, and and we're struggling with this entryway, the safety and security of our doorways as well. So back in August of 21, we reserved, we received the Investing in Iowa Childcare Grant. We received over 750,000 for that, and really that one was an expansion grant. And we took that one full on, and we knew infant care and drop in care. So we have finished 10 rooms officially today. They're moving in. So it's kind of an exciting day and perfect timing for us to come and visit with you today. So renovations are complete. A lot of safety improvements went into that. Also, as I stated before, equipping the classrooms to what children need for young children as opposed to elementary age. It takes a lot of of sinks, a lot of thinking through. And we've had our licenser walkthrough. We've had our childcare resource and referral who we work closely with. And they were so impressed that we designed the spaces not only for the children, but they said, you thought of the teachers as well. What do they need for the needs? We want to be an employer that thinks of our employees. Thank you. So then you can kind of see next slides are completed, and this was a couple weeks ago. So it's even better now, but sinks in every room. We worked with all local contractors and all local businesses to get this done. So we partnered with many of them. So not only are we employing people, but we're employing Dubuqueers to to finish this project. So this is just kind of an overview of of those classrooms that are complete now. Restrooms in every room, sinks accessible to the children at their height, accessible to the to the teachers and all of that, too. So we also received a second grant, which we were a little surprised about. But this grant was to meet the needs of of anything that we couldn't complete in the first one. And during that time, obviously, child chain supply and and funding got got trickier. So the second half, which we are starting later this week, is going to, you know, address those other classrooms that were not already addressed, along with our exterior, making sure that our kitchen is equipped to to feed the children. So that's a, we want to make sure nutrition is involved as well. Our hallway and our stairs are going to get appropriately equipped so that nobody has injuries. And then more restrooms are going to be in that 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 second half as well. Um, so already we've had increased enrollment, so we haven't even completed the whole project, and her phone is ringing off the hook. Infant care is so needed right now, and she's able to fill those classrooms and provide that for families. We can see increased satisfaction with our families. The problem is, is everything is is expensive. So we having turned an elementary school into an early childhood, the architecture drawings were very high. We had to redo things several times to make sure that we were doing it in in a good enough manner. Additional renovation considerations, so making sure that the equipment is is in the classroom. So we've spent a lot of time making sure that our structure is complete and sound so that we can be in the community for years to come. But now we're struggling with filling it. So we have the materials are ready to to have the children that are there, but expanding, we just don't. We don't have any more funding. We've spent so much time making sure our building is beautiful. The sinks are there, the bathrooms are there. Now we need to look at what are we putting it in to make sure it's safe for the kids and make sure their environment is is amazing to come to. So you can see the needs here, necessary building needs. We need to make sure that our entryway is safe, so door system, security, so that only people that are authorized to come in and out, security, making sure that our walkways are safe from any trips. Our food service needs to get up to the second floor since we're expanding it, and then our curriculum and materials. There are just some slides to show, update how we need to update some of our materials. That's the exterior playground area. Another one of the entryway. The doors. The parking lot. So what we're asking today is a consideration for this funding here. Classroom furnishings, I talked about curriculum, exterior doors, safety with the keying and system, keying system, that dumbwaiter that will help our employees get the food from the ground level all the way up to to the second story. Ramp access, we had to add infant ramps to all the rooms and exterior doors. Now we need ramps to make sure that we can get those infants out safely if there's ever an emergency. Also, when you're carrying infants and toddlers into a, we don't want to make sure there's no tripping. So that's why we're looking at the parking lot and the sidewalk repair. But you can also see that Holy Family is taking an investment in this as well. And this just gives you a quick overview of the last several years, what we have put back into our early childhood programs. And we continue to to invest in our own programs as well. So we would like to encourage you to come stop by today. Officially, that first phase is done. So anytime now you can pop in and and come see the classrooms and the good work that got done down there, so.
Anne, do you have anything?
I do, actually. So funding childcare is a critical priority for me and a high priority for me. And I've talked to Bob Knoll several times about the status of your application. So I'm glad today's your day to be here, and hopefully we'll get a decision to you quickly on so you can continue to do the work that you need to do. You're going to increase enrollment by about 125 kiddos, primarily infants. And that takes the greatest ratio of worker to kiddo. And you have 35, or excuse me, 30 new employees. I don't understand how, yeah, I understand you're making a capital request for us. You need us to help you finish capital side of the project. But help me understand how you're doing the people side of the project. You got the kiddos, their folks are calling. How are you getting employees?
Yeah, we we took that stabilization grant, and we turned it into wages and benefits. So we have created higher wages, which are very on the high end of wages in in the Dubuque County area. So we're feeling proud about that. We're starting at $15 an hour. And then we put in place increases for education and training. So if you come to us with a bachelor's degree, you get a bump. So we have levels in there that we're supporting our employees that have experience, have education. If you know, you know, if you have come with that, you get paid more.
And your current hours of operation are what?
Holy Ghost runs 5:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m.
So you're an early morning start? If you looked at a third shift, 3 to 11, or a second shift?
We haven't done a lot of work on that yet, but it is something that we're exploring. And we've talked to Dubuque County Early Childhood and Childcare Resource and Referral. We know that that's a need. We just would, we just need to get more information on it.
Dave Lyons.
Dave Lyons as well, yep.
Have you been working with Dave?
I have been, yep.
And another difficulty, you said so many of the young people in this area of town are free and reduced lunch. And of course, Department of Human Services doesn't pay there. They don't adequately compensate for the children in your care, and they also don't pay for those spots when those children don't show up due to the nature of home environment. Maybe they're not, you know, they're not there as routinely. So is that been fixed such that you can actually make this into a business model?
Well, not entirely, right? I mean, a big part, a part of our work is ministry, too, right? And so we recognize that sometimes it doesn't pay, you know, in in terms of who we enroll. And we know that it's even having infants, if you look at the finances behind having that one to four ratio for those rooms that those financially don't bring about a lot of money, but we know that that's a need and that's something that we have to step up for. But but no, that's not entirely fixed to to improve the what the numbers look like. That's quite honestly why we rely on folks such as yourselves and these different grants to make the capital improvements, because if we had to do that on our own, we wouldn't have childcare.
So I understand that the capital needs and the needs for us to make the costs go away and make those manageable. I understand that, but I don't understand who you're enrolling. If if DHS payment is not sufficient for your business plan, are you enrolling those children or not?
Oh, we are, yes.
We definitely are. We're seeing, everybody is calling Holy Ghost right now. So we have John Deere employees, we have physicians, we have plumbers, we have everybody enrolled over there. So, you know, we're just meeting the needs of of Dubuque County. And if that means a child comes to us that gets DHS assistance, they are accepted as well. We are working on the backend with legislators. I'm advocating as much as I can in these meetings that we need to be paired, paid by the state fairly for the for the children that we're enrolling. So that advocacy is happening on the other end of it, but it's a it's a slow trickle.
So our early learners chose closed their location, they closed their Windsor Street location in the last maybe six months, I think.
Correct.
The barriers that we're talking about right now that couldn't happen. So I don't know what's different in that experience. She couldn't get employees. So I I don't know how this is going to work for you.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have a very good reputation in our in our town. We have a good support system. We have other directors that help support programming. So being a little bit bigger, I think it lends itself to supporting our community within. We also get a lot of support from our parishes and 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 our Holy Family community, and these grants have helped considerably. So I feel, we feel very sustainable, and that program is is doing very well, even though it has a high DHS population.
And a lot of that's efficiency at scale. So when we look at Holy Family Catholic Schools and in our central office and the people who can actually have eyes on the budgets and the numbers to make sure that this all works and Liz's leadership and beyond, that I don't think that's other, you know, childcare supporters and perhaps have some of those opportunities. And so we have a finance committee that looks at our numbers regularly. We have, we have people in central office that are making sure that the the numbers work and that this is sustainable.
So I think this is my last question. Before the pandemic, when I was visiting with one of the previous childcare directors at Holy Family, and there there was a maximum number of DHS funded children that you would accept or a very low number because of this offset issue. Is that going to be the case? Are you going to be looking for financial? Does a does a parent fill out a financial application when they apply to be at Holy Family daycare?
No, not necessarily. They they would tell us if they they are approved for DHS, they won't have to fill anything out on our end. I mean, there is models out there where we have to limit, you know, the number of children per classroom or things. But it's hard to know what the plan is going forward, increasing capacity by to 300 children. We just don't know what that looks like, but we're trying to make sure that we're including everybody in our community and that we try not to, you know, cap that off, per se.
Don't have a cap right now.
I don't believe so.
No, it's not a goal of ours to have that. It's not something that in in Lee's, Liz's newly appointed role to oversee all of EC has not been a priority or even a conversation, quite honestly, to do that.
I support your project. It's needed, and I appreciate you stepping up to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I drive by your location about once a day. I live on on the North End. So it's good to see throughout the campus those those improvements, because you would hate to see the opposite, because there's a lot of bricks and a lot of facilities there. So I'm very pleased to to see the progress, and when the weather's nice, it's nice to see the kids in the out there playing as well. Just just a couple of comments, really. So I appreciate your offer. We've been on the childcare, you know, issue for about three or four years now, trying to improve that. We heard from the community that was a great need, and I have supported funding from Good Development, NICC, we partnered with the city as well on a childcare program. Dubuque County Early Childhood was another. I know ECIA through Business Growth have financed a couple other private centers as well. So it really is taking a community to increase the service to have additional childcare splash. So greatly appreciate you stepping in here, applying for the state money and getting approval. And I would definitely see this as a higher priority for us and for me as well to continue your support and to try to tackle this childcare issue. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I echo both of my colleagues' sentiments. It obviously is a niche that we need fixing and keep things moving forward, and hopefully we can form a partnership to keep this moving.
All right, thank you for your support.
So before you leave the podium, I would just ask my colleagues, it doesn't have, our agenda today doesn't say we can do action on any of these, right? But I would like to, I'm going to ask my colleagues for input, but we took very fast and immediate action on our emergency phones, our emergency radios, right? I'd like to see us get a a resolution and discussion put together for next agenda item to strike on childcare.
I think we'll follow, I would prefer to follow the thing we have been. I know that the radios did get brought up. That was a deadline type thing where we actually saved quite a bit of money by moving it up. I think we should continue following the thing we're on. We'll go through it. We'll discuss it. We have some on here today for the public health response. We're trying to keep them moving forward also. That's my opinion.
Go to the chair.
I think we'll move it, we'll move it, that it's not going to be in the next couple of weeks. I think we'll go through the same process as we have been when we hear all of them. We'll discuss and then move forward with it, in my personal opinion.
All right, thank you for all that you can do. All right.
Thank you. Good to see you in different contexts. Nice to meet you.
Next, we'll have the Bell Tower Productions.
I'm assuming, Mickey, you're going to lead us in some kind of song or dance?
Oh, no, I I I I am an arts administrator. I enable incredibly talented children and adults to do that and try desperately to avoid doing that myself. Excuse me. My name is Mickey Robinson. I am the Marketing and Operations Manager for the Bell Tower Theater. Bell Tower Productions is our official legal name. We are known in the community as Bell Tower Theater. We are a not-for-profit community theater celebrating our 20th anniversary this year. So we're pretty excited about that. I'm here to talk to you today specifically about our Free Summer Musical Program. That program has been around for 16 That program has been around for sixteen years. Technically seventeen, we lost some time with the pandemic. But it is a program that has served hundreds and hundreds of children uh, and thousands and thousands of audience members, all one hundred percent free of charge from day one for the kids to participate. During the pandemic, one of the things that hurt our kids the most was the isolation. And kids working remotely from home, people working remotely from home, uh, really had a profound effect on the mental health of our kids. And we have a program here that allows kids from throughout the county and actually throughout the tri-state area to come together to make new friends, to learn and to really make a connection with their peers as well as with their families and their audiences. In two thousand and nineteen was the last time we performed this program fully. Uh, we did a high school production of Rent School Edition and a youth production of The Wind in the Willows. We had over two hundred and twelve kids uh, involved in the cast and crews of that program and we served over twenty-two hundred audience members. In two thousand and twenty, we were able to do nothing. And I want to talk a little bit about the effects that COVID had on the Bell Tower itself. This program being completely free to the kids does not even come close to earning enough revenue to support what it does. We have relied on outside funders. We have also relied on operational support directly from the Bell Tower Theater to support this program. And I wanted to give you an idea of, of what the Bell Tower has been facing in the last couple of years because of COVID. Um, on March seventeenth, we were ordered closed by the state of Iowa. We had to remain closed until I believe it was May or June, but it actually took us until August of two thousand and twenty before we were able to open again. And when we were able to open again, we did that at thirty-five percent capacity of what we were doing before. And we opened exclusively for adult productions. We were not able, did not feel that we could safely handle children, um, throughout two thousand and twenty. As a result of that, our earned revenue was down seventy percent in two thousand and twenty. Now, the Bell Tower Theater is funded by grant support and by donations. But prior to COVID, seventy percent of our income came from earned revenue. So seventy percent of our income went down by seventy percent in two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and twenty-one, it bounced back slightly. We were able to finally return all the chairs to the theater. Um, after fifteen months, uh, in October of two thousand and twenty-one, we returned the theater to full capacity. That didn't mean our audiences were at full capacity, meant we could sustain full capacity. Uh, our audiences are still coming back to that. A, a good indication of, of the theater overall is our season ticket holders. Um, we had well over seven hundred season ticket holders for our two thousand and twenty season. Most of that was sold prior to, um, the pandemic. So our numbers were only down slightly fourteen percent in two thousand and twenty over two thousand and nineteen. But in two thousand and twenty-one, it was a fifty-seven percent decline in those numbers. And which is honestly remarkable that we had that many people. I, I would have expected it to be even less. So I, I am heartily grateful to the people who came and supported us. Um, in two thousand and twenty-two, we've gotten back to the, where it's only about, it's, the, the slide says a forty-one percent decline. We've actually sold a few more since I produced this a couple of weeks ago. So we're really more at about a thirty-nine percent decline. So we're working back and we're anticipating in two thousand and twenty-three to be back to only a twenty percent decline. The reason I'm standing in front of you here today is to help with the youth program for the next two years. This is a program that we did not require county support for prior to the pandemic. And I believe we will not require county support for after two thousand and twenty-three. We are specifically looking for this money for this summer and for next summer. I think it's important, there, there are so many priorities that you all have. And I wanted to take an opportunity to talk about what the arts does for these kids. We are teaching a whole lot more than song and dance. We are teaching kids to be responsible, to be confident, to work with their peers, to be accountable and reliable. We teach kids creativity and problem solving, self-expression, empathy and focus. And these are things, these are life skills. These are not necessarily just theater skills. These are skills that kids need in all aspects of their life. Um, and I, I, I did a, a little research, thanks to the help of Americans for the Arts. And you can see some statistics there about what arts programming does for kids. They're twice as likely to graduate from college. And four out of five are more likely to vote. They're more likely to be involved in their communities moving forward. And the arts in general make people love where they live and make them more involved in their community. Drawing people to Dubuque County, we are a big, we are a big draw i- in terms of the livability of this community. So I think we are a very important part, um, of this community. If we flip to the last slide, it's really just numbers, but I want to talk about some more specific numbers on these. Shrek the Musical will be our high school show for two thousand and twenty-two. And we actually held auditions, uh, and crew sign up over the weekend and we had more kids show up than we had in two thousand and nineteen. So there is obviously a need for this. We, we saw kids over this past weekend from every high school in the city of Dubuque, from every middle school in the city of Dubuque. Cause we do allow eighth graders to, to participate in the high school program as well. Um, we have kids from, uh, East Dubuque and Galena as well. So we are drawing dollars and drawing their families into Dubuque County as well. Uh, for SpongeBob the Musical, we are anticipating participation of approximately a hundred and seventy-five kids. Those kids will be onstage, they will be backstage, they, they will do a little bit of everything. One of the joys of our program is that theater is a collaborative art and we like kids to learn that from the very beginning. And anything that a kid can possibly do, um, a kid will do. Kids help write the radio commercial. They help build the set. They help with the costumes. Uh, they work backstage. All the technical aspects of the show are done by kids. For Shrek the Musical, uh, we have a graduating senior who's going to choreograph the show for us, which is actually a position that's usually held by an adult. But she is more than talented enough to do that. Uh, and this is somebody who's been in our program since she was seven or eight years old. So we're, we're thrilled that she's moved up into that kind of a leadership role. And I, I have to say one more time that the kids do this a hundred percent for free. As far as the tickets, we do charge for the tickets for the show. The tickets for Shrek the Musical will be twelve dollars and the tickets for the SpongeBob Musical will be ten. So we, we place them there so that it has value to our community, but at the same time, we don't want it to be out of reach of families. Uh, in addition, with the SpongeBob Musical, um, and then with Cinderella in two thousand and twenty-three, there will be one performance exclusively for the kids from Saint Mark Youth and Richmond. We have worked with Saint Mark's, oh, for about twelve or thirteen years. And we always have one performance exclusively for them. Our teachers go down to Saint Mark's, talk to the kids about the show, provide, we provide curriculum materials for that and then all the kids get to come and, and participate in the show. And a cost of that would, would range probably somewhere in about the twenty-five hundred dollar range. And Saint Mark's pays us five hundred dollars to do that. So we supplement the majority of that interaction with the kids from Saint Mark's. Actually, my favorite story is we did a production of Beauty and the Beast a few years ago and kids were statues. So part of that, part of their character, their character was a statue. And the kids come out into the audience and interact with the audience afterwards. And they came out and my little statues, who were about seven or eight years old, walked out. And a Saint Mark's kid looked, and I talked to one of them, I said, oh, your mom's picking you up at such and such a time. And the kid looked at me and said, that's a real person. And, and, and I love that, I love that opportunity that we give to, not only to our kids, but at the kids from Saint Mark's. So as you can see, what we are looking at is a budget shortfall over the two years of slightly more than fifty thousand dollars. It's fifty thousand dollars that we're asking you for. We lost our funding from the MediaCom Foundation, uh, which had actually funded the program since the second year existed. Because the MediaCom Foundation ceased to exist, two thousand and nineteen was the last year they gave out money. And there hasn't been a lot of new funding, non-related to COVID as of late. So I would appreciate if you would give us this hand and I can assure you, we'll be going strong on our own by two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions?
You have any questions, Jay?
I'll maybe just a comment again. So I appreciate you coming here and, and sharing your, your story with us. And, uh, you know, I've had my own, you know, for the last twenty-five years, my children participated.
I was going to say Avery and Julia were both part of our program years ago. Yes.
You know, I can attest to, uh, you know, the benefits beyond just the actual performance themselves and, uh, you know, adding lifelong skills. So, uh, from, from my seat, you, you certainly have, uh, proven your value to the community and, uh, proven your resiliency. So hopefully the county can, uh, provide some type of level of support during the, the last difficult years you faced.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm with you.
Thanks, Anne. I appreciate, sorry, Supervisor McDonough. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next we'll have the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque, Alex.
Uh, good morning supervisors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and talk to you uh, about our workforce grant focused on the immigrant community. Uh, next slide please. Our program is called the Equitable Employment Pathways. Uh, this was revised in January and you should have received the, the revision. Because after conversations with partners within the workforce space, um, and after looking at the shifting landscape in Dubuque, specifically the arrival of new refugee families into our community. Um, and as a direct result of the Immigration Needs Assessment that I am conducting, we wanted to take a much more focused approach, looking at how do we help our immigrant communities become more gainfully and successfully com- employed within our workforce? Um, there are challenges at both ends of the side. We have businesses asking for additional workforce, saying, you know, citing a labor shortage. And we have many members of our immigrant communities who are unemployed and underemployed. Uh, the most recent data we have, uh, from two thousand and twenty shows that the Marshall East community, the Pacific Islander community is at eighteen percent unemployment. Now I'm expecting that to be, uh, lower today than it was, but given the, um, disproportionate rise levels before the pandemic, we still see a large gap. And that doesn't include those individuals who are underemployed, who could be getting better gainful employment. Next slide please. So just to focus on what this grant will address, because it is not attempting to recreate anything. It is, it is focused specifically at gaps that have been identified through our needs assess, uh, assessment. Uh, it'll be looking at immigrant workforce needs, developing community strategy and bringing people together around immigration issues with a big focus on workforce, um, beginning to build immigrant capacity, strengthen immigrant service and working with employers of immigrants, which I will get into more detail. And then also on the data aspect. Next slide, please. So the Immigration Needs Assessment is, uh, work that I have been doing for the Community Foundation over the past two and a half years. Looking at the needs of immigrant communities, uh, understanding their assets, uh, the assets that exist in our community and the barriers and trying to elevate the voices of immigrant communities. A lot of focus groups and interviews with immigrant individuals to find out what the big needs are. Uh, I'm currently in the process of writing up the final report. Uh, next slide. Um, but the work that we have been done, uh, over the past two and a half years have involved a, a huge number of partnerships throughout the community. Uh, I've listed here the partners that were part of our steering committee, but that's, does not include everyone who was involved in the work that we were doing. Uh, next slide please. So as part of the needs assessment, my recommendations are really broken down into three areas. The first has to do with future collective work on immigration issues. How do we as a community come together to try to address these systemic needs? The second part has to do with connecting immigrant communities to the larger system. This, this disconnect is really, I think if you talk with anyone who works with, uh, immigrant populations is one of the, the biggest challenges that we face and something that, uh, puts a barrier in front of all of the other work that we try to do and decreases our efficiency. And then finally, the last section will be focused on specific programs, services and issues. Uh, next slide please. So talking about the need for collaboration, collective action, we believe at the Community Foundation, a lot of other people do as well, is the best way to try to address some of these systemic issues. And we've really seen it be successful over the past two years with the steering committee that we've utilized. Uh, all of those partners as part of the steering committee have come forward and said, yes, we want to see a similar type of collaborative work around systemic issues take place in the future. And so the needs assessment has provided recommendations for, uh, how to do this and how to try to build it for, for long-term strategic issues, those five to ten-year issues that, uh, are going to make a real difference and really move the needle. Next slide please. Coming out of this will be the, there are a number of different recommendations, but kind of the top one is the idea of having an immigration strategy committee. A group, a collaborative group of key stakeholders and members of immigrant communities who regularly meet, uh, focus on specific projects and be action oriented, which is, uh, evidence shows a really important facet for both narrowing the scope, because immigration touches so many different areas, but also encouraging immigrant populations to feel a sense of investment in the work. Too often we have committees that meet and report out, uh, and, and seem stuck in the mud, which is, can be very valuable a lot of times, but having very specific action-oriented progress, I believe will increase buy-in with immigrant communities. The, the committee is also designed to encourage immigrant participation. I'm happy to talk about that. And it's a connection hub for other immigration-focused efforts. Next slide, please. And the reason why this is valuable is because it can really sit at the intersection of businesses, service providers and the immigrant communities themselves, addressing some of those power balances, but connecting them all together. This is a role that I feel that the Community Foundation can adequately play because of our relationships that we both built with all of these different sectors. Uh, next slide please. So the, the second part is around the connection between the immigrant communities and the larger systems. This, the disconnect, I, I, I don't think, you know, I, I sure all of you recognize the challenges that we have connecting like our Marshall East population or Latino population with the resources and the services that we have in our community, most, many of which are top rate. But you might hear people repeatedly say, how do we get people to our services? Where is this disconnect? Why aren't we finding these individuals when they're out there? And a, a big part of the answer is that, uh, frequently our connections are done through committed volunteers who move mountains but have nine to five jobs, don't have sufficient training in these areas, aren't compensated for the work that they're doing. And so there is an enormous bottleneck when it comes to being able to build these connections. Next slide please. So in looking at this, I tried to break it down into four different types of areas. Uh, outreach, culture, navigation and capacity building. As different areas, we can kind of seek improvement. Uh, next slide. And I want to focus on capacity building, because this is really the area that our community could do a huge amount to improve. We talk a lot about outreach. How do we find individuals in these communities? That always comes from the perspective of service providers reaching out and looking as opposed to building up the resources, the powers and the capacity of those communities themselves to help their own populations. Uh, I think we saw during COVID nineteen, the incredible impact that committed volunteers could have from communities like our Marshall East community. But again, these were individuals, uh, working after they got off work from seven to nine, trying to do the legwork themselves without training, without compensation. Uh, it made things a lot more difficult and it, it makes it more challenging for our service providers to actually make real connections going forward. Next slide please. So what are some examples of how to address some of these areas? Um, two that I find really compelling, what, uh, the first is a natural helper program, which is utilized in Maine and Indiana and some other places around the country where we train, empower, recognize volunteers and actually compensate them to do some of this work, both through stipends and through certifications or recognitions through an academic institution, which can be a, a valuable way to move forward. Just being able to engage with volunteers, giving them a sense of worth and giving them the additional training to reach our services uh, has been shown in other communities to, to do a lot of additional extra work. Uh, another example is the Guadalupe. Another example is the Guatemalan Mentor Program which is something that we ran in partnership with NICC And the Dubuque Community School District, getting an actual Guatemalan individual who speaks Yishil as well as Spanish and English Into our school districts to be able to work with Yishil speaking children there. A huge need that the school district, you know, had struggled to be able to fill due to The requirements that are in place for who they're able to bring in and hire for work. And next slide please. And like I said, these partnerships, oh, one back. These partnerships are a key part of how to operate all of this. This grant will include a partnership with the NICC in terms of trying to increase outreach through an immigration outreach coach. Based at NICC, something that they've been really looking to build their capacity with. And an example with the Guatemalan Mentor position could not have gone forward without Our work identifying, bringing people together and finding the funding. The community school districts, working with the mentor and the NICC Playing a crucial function as the employer of the individual. So these kind of partnerships are an important part of what the Strategy Committee can bring forward. Next slide please. And then finally, we will look at some of those different services and options that are art there and how we do workforce development better. One of the, these examples run the gamut of a number of different areas from working with employers. To help them be able to successfully hire and then retain immigrant populations. Which is a huge problem that we've seen cause people to lose their jobs in the past. Improving coaching with certificate programs. Being able to engage with business leaders through the programs that we we run and really have a focus on immigrant communities. How do we improve these different services? That's kind of what the grant will focus on. Next slide please. And then finally, we want to include in this because it is a large ask. We want to include funding to be able to track the effectiveness of what's happening and dig a little bit deeper. And move from outputs which are listed here, next slide. To being able to look at some of the outcomes, for example. When we get immigrants successfully placed at businesses. Are they employed a year later? Three years later, are they being able to flourish within these companies? We've seen a lot of examples of major moves to try to get, for example, our Marshall East population employed at specific employers. Pulling lots of people together, CEOs onboard, immigrant populations excited. And three months later, most of them are out of work again. Why is that? How do we track that and make sure that that isn't something that's happening as we push forward with the work that we're doing? Next slide please. Here is the three year program budget that we have labeled forward. The next slides kind of go into details about these specific categories. But I want to be respectful of your time, if you have specific questions, I'm happy to move towards the specific budget line items. But I really appreciate your time and would love to be able to answer any questions that you might have for the work that we're doing.
I actually didn't understand the, when I looked ahead to your slides. This part where obviously it's Breakdown of cost, but then another slide you shift the shaded area. How should I read those slides on my own?
Sure, so if you can move to the next slide, for example. So here, what we wanted to do was be able to call out each of the different budget line items. I was hoping that this would be a helpful way for you to kind of distinguish What could be a large amount of work, so for example, the coordination facilitation role Would be a critical component of allowing that collaborative work. So this would be hiring an individual to come in and lead The Immigration Strategy Committee and the implementation of these other working elements. It would also be an important part of making sure that the work of the committee is connected to other efforts that Take place with immigrants, for example, the Pacific Health Advisory Group, Cafe Latino. The Immigration Forum that was recently run by the Sisters. There is a huge need for these specific types of groups to continue meeting, to continue doing work. We are in no way saying that every thing should be subsumed into one committee. But we need better connections between these committees in different areas. That's been partially a role that I've been able to play over the past couple of years. But it would be terrific to have a person involved Who can make sure that there is a level of communication between all of those people who are actively working on systemic Issues facing immigrant communities. And so each of the other sections tries to break it out in a similar way, I'm happy to go through it if that would be helpful.
Well, I guess for me, it's not that I can choose to fund Coordination of facilitation and choose the hundred and sixty seven thousand dollar piece. And and accomplish something. That you're highlighting it to show the cost over the three years, it's a sum total of six hundred thousand dollars as you see it right now moving forward.
Yes, that that is the way that we believe we can most effectively move forward with these systems. We of course, you know, recognize that you have a limited amount of funding to be able to provide for these Type of things and you know, I'm happy to answer any questions and and be able to work forward. But this is to hopefully show what each of these different areas would be Would be tasked with and would would have resources going towards.
Jay, did you have any?
I do, good, good to see you again from the Community Foundation, we might have to make you our house Dan for for funding requests. But you always are very well prepared and present a lot of a good compelling programs, so we appreciate that. Kind of two questions, do we have data today? Or would this project address the data related to Immigration and workforce in raw numbers, so either total numbers Or percentage of those gainfully employed is, do we know that now and or would that be part of this project?
It would be a part of this project to try to get much more in-depth localized data. Unfortunately, a lot of the data that is available is either At a national, larger level or is a year or so out of date, you know, we just Received 2020 unemployment data which, while helpful is, that's a, it seems like a thousand years ago. I think one of the biggest challenges also that we have is that when focusing specifically on immigrant communities. There is a huge gap in available local data, both because of the Lack of connection that I spoke about before, but also frankly, the the fear and the fact that a lot of immigrant communities Work more in the shadows. And so being able to get really specific Numbers on that are challenging and that doesn't necessarily have to do with documentation status. For example, a lot of our Guatemalan immigrants are currently going through court cases. But the fact that those court cases are taking four years to complete at the moment Means that being able to formally collect data on that population Is extremely challenging for for normal institutions. Being able to work on programs and get connected with employers and work with them to set up, okay. Let's look at the immigrant populations you are hiring as part of this program and let's be able to track them into the future. I think will give us much more detailed information about where we're being successful and where we're not being successful.
Just last question B, I've found on your website, the All of Us in Dubuque. Would this be connected to that program, a part of that program, how do they, how do they currently relate?
Absolutely, All of Us in Dubuque was a a campaign that we led during COVID-19 to be able to Bring forward and call attention to the work that diverse communities and with a big specific focus on immigrant communities. Were doing to help the larger community during the pandemic. Honestly, I was afraid that with the the level of Confusion, uncertainty and panic that was taking place during the pandemic that there might be hostility towards immigrant groups. And we saw a little bit of that, so this campaign was a huge partnership with I believe over Forty organizations to try to put this together and really educate the general population on what was taking place. That was a lot of work, I would love to see that continue to flourish, to be expanded so we can continue to show stories Of immigrant members of our community doing active good and being engaged in civic processes. As well as continuing the education of what, you know, what these cultures bring to our community. It's astounding, we have Guatemalan Mayans here who represent Possibly the oldest civilization in the Americas, here in Dubuque, Iowa, that what a tremendous cultural gift that is. And it's not, it's not known by a lot of people within the community. So that kind of information I think can be really powerful For helping shift mindsets and narratives about how to incorporate immigrant communities into our work.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The only question I had Alex is, and we talked about it, is Kind of an overlap of services is one of my concerns, they have Goodwill Industries taking care of the title on three and four. You have NICC, you have Northeast Iowa Workforce Development Board, you have the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. You have Fountain of Youth, you have Four Mounds, you have the Elm Street Facility, everybody's pulling for the employment thing. And now you come with this, you know, it's kind of like I have trouble Visioning how this is gonna help. When we have all these people, all these hands in the dish are ready, how this is gonna, you know, that's, that's my question, I guess.
I mean, and it's, it's an excellent one, right? How many nonprofit organizations does Dubuque have? More than we need maybe, but well, or a better coordination between those nonprofits can be a huge part. The reason why we changed our our work specifically, a big part of that was through talking with Partners like NICC and GDDC, we wanted to not necessarily take on all workforce because There are organizations that are much better capable of leading those types of efforts than us. But there was a huge gap around immigration, a gap that organizations like NICC Recognized, I believe as part of your packets, you should have a a letter of support from Dr. Wee saying that this was An effort that they wanted, I have copies here if you don't have those and would like to see them.
I didn't see it either, but certainly forward to us, that'd be awesome.
Sure, or I've got copies.
Oh, sure. Pass those out, thank you. You are prepared.
And the, the reason I bring, you know, we wanted to focus down on immigration specifically is because While there are so many organizations working on workforce because it's such a huge issue right now facing our community. Systemic approaches to solving the barriers of immigrants is an area where we have a lot of room to be able to grow. And that has to do with the lack of connection. NICC is one of the, in my opinion, one of the premier organizations in our community Doing outreach to the Marshall East Community and the Latino communities. I think, I think they are one of the organizations that is doing the best work around here. They have asked for, you know, becoming part of this program in order to help them Increase that capacity because they recognize that it's An area where they need to grow and they need to be able to do work. And honestly, NICC from their position of here in downtown, I don't believe can do all that work on their own. Being able to build capacity and resources within our immigrant communities. That's where we're going to find a lot of traction when it's not just NICC reaching out but Immigrants being lifted out through their own community to meet together in the middle. That's why We we've structured it that way, I wish I had the full needs assessment to show you, I'm about forty pages in. But it's, it's really one of the huge needs that We've seen as part of our research is the need to build that additional capacity so that there's better connection.
Thank you.
So I guess first to a point that you raise, I had a discussion with Wendy Mim-Herald who was here from NICC I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, something I think I reached out to Ed late last night about is I see similarities as well and we're gonna have a presentation from Goodwill about another sector Of people who want to work, can work, relish working. The workforce issue, right now we have it very siloed as boards of supervisors, the applications have come in As this is a good idea, these are great ideas, this, and what I would like to see is Those applicants working together, spending some time to understand each others Each other's proposals to see if we can get a grand idea. I intend to spend rescue money on workforce. It's a critical need, it's a high priority. But where to intersect the funding is very difficult to know, so that's something I wish to do as well. So maybe we can do that, we don't have to fund in three weeks. We can ask them to do some more collaborative work, they could even score each other's applications. We could put them to work for us and say, here's the seven that we have. Go, please meet, the next step of applying for rescue funds is for you to understand What each other is doing and some of your letters of reference are ending up on each other's applications. That even makes it more confusing, Nancy Van Milliken wrote a letter supporting Goodwill. So how do we balance that? I don't know how to do that, but that's I think where I am similar to you. Your application Alex, I like your application a great deal because I've worked with immigrant communities as you know, you and I've worked together on some things and I would just use one example that Folks probably don't know, but Simple, there's a very large apartment complex that changed management. And many immigrants live inside this apartment complex and The fear that raced through that population. And that we got noticed, people were packing their bags. They're done, we had workers heading across the bridge and heading south, they were just done. They were employed, they were just terrified of what might come from a routine change From high level, you're this entire complex. It's different today, we're not renewing your leases, we don't do cash payments, just frightening. And it was you Alex, you and your group and your stakeholders who calmed that down. Who brought people together at that point just via Zoom, but to say, there's nobody to handle that. When those rumors begin and that fear explodes. That's, there's nobody focused on that and developing those relationships, is, am I correct?
I, I would say, yes, you know, the the work with the housing Work that we did both back in September I believe it was, but it also resurfaced recently Last month and is something that we're engaged again. The, a lot of the work on the ground, there are amazing groups like the Tri-State Vias, like Dubuque for Refugee Children. And like the City of Dubuque Housing Department that really stepped up and provide resources and expertise to address these problems. But those weren't groups that were talking together or coordinating together Or planning for the medium term, because it's one thing to address that Immediate issue and it's another thing to figure out How do we get some of our immigrants into different housing options so that Most of them aren't all piled together in one apartment and if something happens In the future, you know, we're, we're trying to recreate this whole solution again. That's where we're hoping with the Immigrant Strategy Community To be able to take some of these issues like housing for immigrants And be able to put together a systemic approach that focuses on that Medium to long term solution so that in five years, we don't have to come back and say Why are we talking about these exact same problems that that we discussed five years ago?
On the immigrant issue. Is the state doing anything on to create some kind of system like this? Could we apply for a state grant to do this work? I saw it raised In the newspaper about the Cracker Barrel on Saturday where the legislators met with There were just ten folks from the community there, but Do you know of anything that the state's working on that could be A source of income for this type of program?
I am not aware of anything at the moment, the, it has been Challenging I know for certain groups to find state level funding. As part of this work, right, we are, we are actively trying to identify funding to go forward. And I'm very hopeful that there is state and national funding or funding from national level organizations who would be able to support this work. I view it as an important, you you made the point of immigrants leaving our community, I also feel like Being able to build out these Support networks is an important part for being able to to draw them in in the same way. Seventy percent of the change in population between June of 2020 and June of 2021 came from came from international immigration, according to the most recent data. And between 2010 and 2020, even though foreign-born individuals make up two percent of our county's population, less than two percent, they accounted for nearly twenty-five percent of the growth in population during that time. So it's a, a significant group for being able to do this and the more immigrants who come to our community and the better we're able to serve them, the more word of mouth will spread and the better we'll be able to go after those grants and those financial systems that will be able to support us in the future. Once people recognize, oh, there's something happening in Dubuque, Iowa.
So people know that my, both my grandchildren live here. I'm so fortunate that my kids live here, my grandkids live here. But when I was a young parent, we took our kids to Iowa City so they could hear people who spoke languages they didn't recognize. And they could see people wearing clothing that they had no idea what that was. And in Dubuque, we still, we still need to do that. But the work that we could do with immigrants and other efforts for diversity, equity and inclusion, we need to change that environment. It shouldn't be expected to have status quo remain because it's a retention issue selfishly for me to keep my kids here. They're now parents and, and we need a rich, we all grow when we have the richness that otherness brings. So I, I mean, I support what the work you're doing, the work Margie that you're gonna address us next on. But I would like to see there be some assessment of each other's work production that you're asking us to fund to see how we can make the dollars go better or maybe be reassured if it's multiple millions that are invested into workforce that we know the stakeholders are the people who wrote the applications, that you're all talking together.
Great, and you know, familiar with Viatts, obviously. They are boots on the ground, they're action. You know, they're taking people to appointments, they're getting food to people. Community Foundation is bringing, trying to bring these people together. We need more boots on the ground. Make this work to get into the population and try to help them. I guess, you know, yeah, I support what you're doing. And as Ann said, I think we need to, we do need somebody to coordinate all of this to get, you know, the boots on the ground that we need.
And the, the one, I, I, I completely agree with you about the importance of boots on the ground, which is why this includes funding for NICC. The one area, if, if I can be so bold, is to push back, is that what we need also is boots on the ground within our immigrant communities. The, the number of people who are, are paid and compensated to support their own population is staggeringly low. And that's a lot of the reason why we, we struggle to make those connections is because we don't have that capacity building going on.
Viatts has identified a man who has a green thumb. And this person could garden like nobody's business. So community garden plots, perhaps on our Food Policy Council. How do we help that individual make his income? Giving us that rich talent back. But I don't know how to do that and our mutual friend on Viatts doesn't know how to do that. That has to, that's skill identification is just from personally knowing someone. But then it has to go to someone who can kick it as a workforce issue. Is it a connection? Is it just a passion? Is it a hobby? Is it someone who should be working in the city of Dubuque? Gardens? So, yeah. I think it's a very worthwhile thing, but I, I do think we should have some work, task force work here that I've already, has to add to kind of start looking into.
Okay. Anything else, Jay?
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Motion to recess for five minutes so I can be fresh for the last two presentations.
Second.
Motion, the second recess for five minutes, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ten fifty-five. Fellow board of supervisors back in the session. Working on our ERP application presentations, we will move forward with Goodwill Industries of Northeast Iowa.
Morning supervisors. I'm always afraid I'm gonna need a step stool when I get behind police to see over it. Well, good morning. Thank you so much for your time today as well as for your service to Dubuque County. We were saying during the break that don't envy your decision-making, these are great projects to review. So just really appreciate your consideration. My name is Star Rup. I serve as the president and CEO for Goodwill Industries of Northeast Iowa. And I have the privilege this morning of introducing your presenters and then getting out of the way and letting them be amazing. So first of all, in the stands, I just want to acknowledge we have three people who have really dedicated their lives to ensuring that we're fulfilling our mission of removing barriers to independence. And they're here to help field questions at the end, if you have any. And then we have Andy Maurer. Andy oversees all of the marketing and messaging for our twenty-county territory. So he's put this together and thank you for your guidance with all of this. And then last but certainly not least, we have Margie Waywood, and I think some of you probably know Margie. She's pretty active in the Dubuque community. And so Margie serves as our Director of Mission Services, not only for Dubuque County, but also Macochona and Decora, some of the other surrounding communities in the east side of our district. So this presentation that you're going to see today is really, I think, a reflection of Margie's passion for serving people with disabilities, her passion for workforce development and her passion for, and, and you talked about this a little bit, that collaboration piece with other businesses and entities throughout Dubuque County and throughout our territory to really help connect people to work and help them see, realize their greatest potential. So excited to turn this over to them. I think, I hope you'll find their message compelling. I'm sure you'll find it relevant. Again, the workforce piece is just so relevant right now and there's great opportunity for all of us to come together to help solve that. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Margie Waywood, Director of Mission Services for Goodwill Industries. I'm gonna change my, how I start, just kind of based on the previous presentations and questions about so much about workforce. There's so many of us working on workforce. And with, this is an education awareness campaign first and foremost. It's about educating and helping people become aware of the need of people with disabilities to obtain employment and to obtain fulfilling employment. And we, we talk a lot, our, our community, our county, our nation has done a lot for people with disabilities over the years. Starting out with six, the sixties and seventies with community integration, moving people out of institutional settings. Just last month, we celebrated National Down Syndrome Day. April is National, is Autism Awareness Month. October is Employment for People with Disabilities Month. So as a community and as a country, we have a lot of, of things to honor and recognize people with disabilities. But what I'm interested in is bigger change. Now moving from being aware of, of people with disabilities, recognizing, welcoming them, but to welcoming them to a bigger piece of our pie of the American dream, which is work. And big change comes from education awareness. You have to first be aware that there's an issue and then you have to be educated about what to do about that. What to do about that, how to make a difference. So that's what this campaign is all about. So you can move forward to a few slides. And I'll briefly go over some of the history of Goodwill. But this campaign is, is called Inclusion Works, kind of a double entendre. Inclusion based on people with disabilities being included, included in the workforce. As well as inclusion does work. It, it helps to make the workforce stronger by including people with disabilities in it. So the, the goals will be to increase the awareness of our community and our county about people with disabilities in the workforce and about the skills and talents they can bring and how they can impact your workforce. Promoting the development advancement of people with disabilities and not just people served by Goodwill. We're gonna be spearheading this. If we get this grant, we'll be coordinating it. But it won't just benefit people Goodwill serve. It will benefit everyone with a disability in Dubuque County, whether they're served by another organization or whether they're not served by an organization and they have a, a disability and they're not getting any service. It will, it will impact everyone with a disability in Dubuque County. And it will impact the employers who don't have disabilities because their workforces will change. And it's gonna create opportunities and foster collaborations between business and organizations that serve the disabled. Next slide, please. So the history of Goodwill, just in general, I'll overview it. It was started by Edgar J. Helms in Boston. And his philosophy was to give people a hand up, not a handout. So it was teaching people, giving them skills, helping them learn how to have productive work and then selling those items, restoring furniture, repairing clothing and then selling them. So Goodwill today has expanded that to multiple populations and multiple types of services and programs that we offer throughout the country. Goodwill Industries of Northeast Iowa was founded in nineteen sixty in Waterloo. And we came to Dubuque in nineteen ninety-four at a request of Department of Human Services. There, at that time, home and community-based waiver services were very new. And there were no organizations existing in Dubuque County who provided services to children or adults who lived at home with their families. They were required to move to an institutional setting or a group home. So Goodwill came to provide that service. I'm fortunate to be the first hired employee after my supervisor in nineteen ninety-four. So we started out with myself and my boss. We had two employees and two consumers. Two people who lived at home with their families. And today we have over a hundred employees in Dubuque and Dubuque County. And we have approximately a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred people we serve annually throughout our different programs. And that doesn't include Weowee. Weowee is a new service within the last year. So I'm sure our numbers of who we're serving is gonna go even bigger now that we're providing the Weowee services as well. So forward. We are more than a store. And we have a lot of educating to do about that because most people don't, don't realize that even today, after almost thirty years providing services in Dubuque County. And I said this at our staff meeting last week, I said, wait, we talked about tell our story. That's one of our, our mission values is tell our story. I said, every one of you I bet has told our story because I bet you introduce yourself as I'm Margie and I work at Goodwill, but not the store. Always follow with not the store because that's what people think when you say Goodwill. So you can move forward. This is our Weowee program again. We, we started that. This is our WEOWA program again. We, we started that last year. You can move forward. These are some of the programs that we have. And this really is, these are really steps that we have that we'll partner with. And this is our follow-up. The campaign is about educating businesses and employers, helping them see the value of hiring people with disabilities. We're well-equipped to do the job development, the job placement, the training. And these are some of the types of programs we would use. We have an occupational skills training programs we can develop, which is an eight-week program where you train someone to do a specific job task. They do the task and then they, they have the skill to do that job in the employment site. Enclaves are a more long-term training type program. You work with small groups with a job coach. The job coaches are 100% of the time, can be onsite at the business. They would learn business-specific skills for that program and that business and that industry. Another partnership that's recently developing, we're in the process of doing our first pilot, is a Modified Certificate Program Partnership with NICC. Other partners in that is the Dubuque Community School District and Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services. So what we're working on is lengthening the certificate program so that people with disabilities can be successful. And our first program, we're gonna work, our goal to offer is CNA, is the CNA program. So we're piloting that. Our goal is to start that in the late summer, early fall. And what that will look like is it will be a little bit longer than the traditional program. They'll only have class once a week. And then the second day of week won't be a class day. It'll be basically a drop-in mentoring time where they'll meet with the NICC Success Coach, have supports from Goodwill and NICC VR to help them, what, help them talk about and work through those, those program goals. So what did they learn this week in class? What do they need more work on? What do they need tutoring on? What do they need support with to be successful in this course? And at the end of the course, the goal is they'll have that CNA certificate to go get a higher skilled job. We've talked about doing the same thing with construction, CNC operator, welding, any of their programs that they offer with these certificate programs. It's been my dream for a while to try to come up with a way to make it so that people with disabilities can succeed with those and learn the skill and obtain those higher skilled jobs. But they need more time to do it and they need more support to do it. So this is, this is the way that that's happening. So I'm very happy to see that that's gonna be starting at the end of the fall. Next slide. These are some of our vocational programs. So again, this is what we would do to follow up with the employers that we reached through this awareness campaign. Job development, job search, we provide job coaching and support on the job site. I touched on the occupational skills and the enclave. Business development is that partnership with employees, helping them to learn what resources are available to them. Helping them to become comfortable, help develop natural supports on the work site for people with disabilities. And then discovering customized employment is a process for people with more significant disabilities to help them find employment that's meaningful. Next slide. Our target market is the Dubuque County businesses. And the campaign strategies promote inclusion works through the traditional and digital market. And actually, this is probably part of Andy's campaign, but the partners that I have developed and established so far are both Chambers of Commerce for Dubuque and Dyersville. But I have Vocational Rehabilitation, the Community Foundation, the Dubuque and Western Dubuque School Districts. I've had partnerships with them for many years as well as IVRS. So all of our groups are gonna work together to promote and help people understand about employment with disabilities. And I'll, I'll jump in if there's something that's related to me.
Sounds good. We can go to the next slide, please. Again, I'm Andy Mauer, VP of Marketing. So the Inclusion Works Campaign, what we have, I've broken it down into a timeline of like, so it's a two-year campaign. It's, although it's nine quarters, so there's an extra quarter in there. But so in Q1, we'd look at a business survey. Surveying businesses to find out their needs. What are they currently employing? Kind of just to give us a general overview of what's going on. Also in that Q1, we'd be developing the creative assets for the campaign. Now, the campaign we talked about includes traditional media, which you'll see on here like billboards. You'll see television and radio, but there's also digital campaigns, which is streaming services. So those are kind of ongoing through the whole time period when you see that. And then I have a breakout of like a radio, direct mail, email. Again, leading up to then Randy Lewis, who is someone that, and Margie can talk, Margie will talk a little bit about Randy, but it kind of builds up to Randy out there making these presentations to the community. And to let people know, hey, Randy's gonna be here. You should comment. It's free to the public. It's gonna be great information. So the campaign runs along and with, again, build up to each presentation. We have four in there. Another thing that I'd like you to know on there, down at the bottom, you see review metrics, review metrics. That's an ongoing thing. So what we do is we don't just put the campaign out there and say, oh, I wonder if it's successful. I wonder what we're doing. Cause awareness campaigns is difficult to find out. But through digital advertising, especially, we can really target Dubuque County. We can draw a circle around Dubuque County and say, we want all our messages to go there. Now, if we use some traditional media like Channel 7, K W W L, that is gonna cover a broader area, but there's still advantages of using that. And that's why it's incorporated into, into this. But I'm a big believer in getting those metrics and trying to find out who's seeing the ads. Not only when they're seeing them, what are they doing with it? Are they going to a landing page? Are they going to our website? Are they looking at where can I get more information? So that's the timeline. And I will go over next to the budget portion of it. And again, I won't, I'll just kind of briefly touch over some of the things. Again, these are our dollar amounts. You know, again, billboards, we're talking about rotating billboards that would go, again, all of this is in Dubuque County, would be focused around Dubuque County. We'd probably look at rotating boards in different locations throughout a two-year period. Broadcasting cable, again, because I'm a nonprofit and I work with these people all the time. I'm well-versed in asking for sponsorships. Is there any value added? Is there any brought to you by, is anything extra? Can we get a mention on a newscast or something? So that's all part of it too. And that's something that we probably bring to it just because of our background working in the nonprofit industry. We have radio in here again, that's again, local radio targeted. I have OTT streaming. A lot of people may not know what that is, but that's like Roku. A lot of the, you hear people cutting the cord. Okay, so these ads are fed to people that are streaming. And there's an incredible amount of people doing that, getting their content on their phone. The beauty of that, again, and also audio streaming like Pandora, Spotify, is you can tell when someone looks at the ad and you can say that person looked at it. If it's a TV ad, did they look it up for five seconds and skip it? Or did they watch all the way through or 10 seconds? We have that data. We know what they're seeing. So again, that's really important for then to us to come back and say, I had two reporting periods. So what we would do is like halfway through the campaign, we would provide a comprehensive report. And then at the end of the campaign, again, we provide another comprehensive report to you. But again, we'd have all that information available anytime, like during the month. So that would be available if anybody had any questions. So I think that's all I need to cover that.
So I think the next slide is Randy Lewis.
I am so excited about Randy Lewis. I would really encourage you to even watch some of his YouTube videos and TED Talks. We hired Randy to come and talk at a higher performance luncheon for employers, probably about seven years ago. And he is so good. He was the Vice President of Distribution Logistics for Walgreens. He has an adult son with autism. So he comes at things from both sides. He, he is the person who was behind founding what's, what we call that Goodwill, the Walgreens program. And Walgreens initiated an occupational skills partnerships with Goodwills across the nation because Goodwells and Walgreens were pretty much everywhere together. And so that was an occupational training program that we had in Dubuque at the JFK and Asbury facility for quite a long time until we ran out of referrals. And it was that eight-week program. People went into Walgreens. They had a job coach there. They learned retail skills. So it was just the basics about retail skills. Selling, customer service, alcohol and tobacco laws, stocking, everything you needed to know in a retail training program. And then they were, worked, then they moved on to our job development program to find a job in retail. So that program ended for us because people, not everybody wants to do retail. And so we kind of flushed out retail referrals at the time. And people, the shift in employment development at that point was more individualized job training. And so we went to work readiness assessments, which can be more specific to a job seeker's area of interest, not necessarily just retail. So Randy gives a dynamic speech. He talks about, he talks to employers as an employer about how this is business. This is not charity. The expectation for people hired with disabilities is that they will do the same job for the same pay alongside a regular worker. And that's what they did with the distribution center that he opened, a brand-new distribution center in North Carolina. And that's part of the video presentation I'd like to show if we have time. Otherwise, I'd encourage you to watch it. But he, they had hired one-third of their employees in that 600-staff distribution center had a disability of some kind. He talked at our, at our presentation last time, he said there was not one single disability they discovered that they couldn't work with. It was all individual, based on that individual person and their skills and their talents and their personality that determine their success, not what disability they had. What I learned from that first presentation is that I needed more partners. I was very disappointed. I did not have the attendance of the employee, the employer community at that event. I think, you know, we offered free lunch. It was at the Hotel Julian, sit-down dinner, speaker. I had arranged with Tri-Ret to offer SHRM credits for all HR managers who came free. And I think we had five to 10 employers at the max. Most of us were people in the organizational world, people who served people with disabilities and case management and DHS. And so this time, we've got the Chambers of Commerce onboard because I go to a lot of chamber events. I'm on boards with the chamber committees. And when the chamber sponsors something promoted to their members, you get much better attendance. So this time, that's why I have both the Dyersville and Dubuque Chamber onboard to draw those employers in. Because we can't find enough work for people with disabilities and enough meaningful work with people with disabilities without that employer buy-in. They have to believe that a person with a disability can do that job and that it's not a liability for them and it's not a higher expense. And Mr. Lewis is perfect to give that message and speak on their level of, as an employer. But then also speaking to the schools, which we have in their appearance, he speaks to the parents as a parent and understanding where they're coming from and having a child with a disability and working through that IEP process. He's, he's the gold standard for us. So I'm just so excited. He's really great. And I don't wanna just open a door for people with disabilities. I wanna open a highway. I wanna, I wanna make a big path for people to get jobs.
Thank you, Margie.
Thank you.
And you have any questions?
Well, I'd like to see the video. Is it short?
Yeah, three minutes, three minutes and 20 seconds.
I'll give you three minutes if it alone. Thank you.
I would prefer not if we don't have audio. It was painful last time. You have the video on a flash drive, but. I have a few questions if we can go there. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. You're one of our only applicants that put kind of a media in a, you know, message as far as paying media ads and spot ads to, to do good work. And so I applaud you on that. It's unique. My question being maybe can you expand a little bit on what would be maybe the main pillars of your message? And what else, other than Mr. Lewis, who sounds like he's a wonderful speaker, what else would you be trying to get to Dubuque County residents?
First of all, it's, it's gonna be educating.
Indoor businesses, excuse me.
Sure. First of all, it's gonna be educating the employers about people with disabilities and work that they are capable. And I think this is a great time because there's signs everywhere for people needing employees. People, employers need to look at populations and workers they haven't considered before. And so this is a prime time to target them. So the, the thing will be to target those employers, get a message to them displaying and showing to them that people with disabilities are capable of work and they're capable of more work than cleaning your tray at the restaurant or taking your garbage out. So helping them to understand that people with disabilities have skills and talents and they can do the job. They can make your workforce better. They can make your employment site better. They can fill your positions. They're long-term reliable workers. They're gonna bring the, the elevation of your mood of your business up. Probably not gonna have a lot of complaints and criticisms about your business from people with disabilities working in your site. That's our main message is the employer. Because we, we have not only Goodwill, but LSI, Hills and Dales, VR. We all work on placing and developing those job placements for people with disabilities. And we all do good work. We all work together very well and partner with all of them all the time. But we need the employers to understand. We need the employers to be open to hiring people with disabilities. And to understand they have skills and they can learn skills. And that's the other reason this partnership with NICC is so timely, is to have the certificate programs. And at the, at the presentations, my goal would be to have a panel of the graduates of the certificate programs, along with the employers and the businesses who've hired them. So they can speak directly to other area businesses about these qualified employees that have come their way through these partnerships and through hiring.
I just would add a little bit onto that is, from a creative standpoint, we would look at finding success stories too. Finding actual disabled people, finding employers that have had success doing this and talking about it too, to educate, so.
Margie, you, you said that one of the job skills that person with disabilities could be, could successfully perform is a CNA. Yes. Do, do you have examples of that? Do you, how do, do you have an example of where that's actually worked? Where that's happened, someone's been trained to do that?
No, but when I'm talking about people with disabilities, it's not necessarily just someone with an intellectual disability. It's anyone with a disability. It could be a mental health issue. It could be autism. It could be any disability. It could be, so there's a lot of disabilities and people are overlooked. And one thing in the video, you'll see when you watch it. One of the examples that Mr. Lewis gives is a woman who graduated with, for human service, human resources and marketing. And she had gone to a high, high-level education in the east coast, top of her class, sent out, and she had cerebral palsy, sent out 300 resumes and got 30 interviews and no job offer. And he hired her to work at his plant in, in North Carolina. And he said, her speech is a little difficult sometimes to understand. Or he didn't say this in the video, but he said this at our live presentation. Sometimes difficult to understand her. And he said, when, when she would give a training for the employees, they would have to listen closely. But he said, that's not a deficit. You want your, you want your employees to listen closely to your HR manager when they're giving a, a training. And so it, it could be anyone with a disability. So people are gonna be vetted for the programs and getting into the certificate programs. They'll have to have the capability and the competency. But when they get that certificate, that's what that will show is that they have the competency to do that job. And the reason we chose CNA was because we felt that had the best potential to have the quickest employment. There's a lot of CNA positions open in our community and they're having difficult times hiring. So we wanted to choose a certificate program that we would be able to have the greatest ability to place people in jobs soon and see that success.
Oh, childcare.
That, that too. Yes. And that would be one of the lists as well.
You can be a person with a disability and you still can parent and care for children.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. That's on the list as well. It was a, it was a collaborative decision between Volk Rehab, the Dubuque Community Schools and NICC and Goodwill. And I asked VR and the schools, where's the interest? Who, where do, what do people want to get jobs in? And that was a high level for interest was CNA.
So there's another program now since the pandemic called Basic Care Aid. So you don't need the CNA designation. There's a, it's a different level of certificate. And we employ basic care aides at Suncrest. So we're an employer. So maybe that's a conversation we could have offline to see how this might work to benefit county. I was like, you know, so think of that. And then I guess the other, my question really is how, has this been tried in other areas? Or is Dubuque, I, I know you're very innovative and that's one thing I admire about you.
I don't know if it's been tried anywhere else. This is really just kind of a brainchild I've had. And just over the years of working for almost 30 years, figuring this, this is a barrier that we need to break down is employment options. And helping employers to understand that there's value and it's not difficult. Sometimes people think it's very costly to make accommodations for people with disabilities in the work site. And that it's gonna be really expensive and they don't wanna do that. And that's not true either. And safety. They think that there's a safety issue. Our employment, our employment site is gonna be at risk with safety. People might have accidents. And Randy Lewis also has examples about that that's the safest plan they have. Safety goes up. Because a lot of times, good or bad, people with disabilities are rule followers. If you're supposed to wear safety glasses and a helmet, they're gonna have them on. And the other employees do likewise. They model that. So it's safer. Some of the disability accommodations people have had, one I remember hearing in a talk was their distribution warehouse lining up the stock. A lot of times they'll use a long SKU number. It'll be a number. And the accommodation they made for people with disabilities was they use pictures. Very low cost, a laminated picture of an apple, a cow, a tree. And he said, everyone was faster. What they discovered is their whole workforce was faster because our brains see a tree and match it up, a tree to a tree much faster than we do a long-digit SKU code. So they found through some of the accommodations they've made, their warehouse works better. their warehouse works better. It's, it's one of their top producing warehouses. And employs one-third of, of their workforce is people with disabilities. People with autism, people with intellectual disabilities, physical disabilities, mental health, all disabilities. It's a success story.
How many individuals do you work with that could be employed?
Um, well, we only have 12 on our enclave because we shifted from a kind of a an institutional model almost of training where it's, it's a training program to community-based employment. So we have 12 people on our enclave, but we wouldn't be just drawing from our enclave. We would be drawing from Volk Rehab, Weowah, Hills and Dales, everybody. This is, like I said, this is not just for Goodwill. This is for our community to educate our community employers about the value of employees with disabilities all around. And our target is more the employer than the person with a disability. We, we need to educate those employers.
Thank you very much, Margie.
It is heavily, heavily weighted toward. I mean, your budget breaks down. It's, it's expensive. It's expensive marketing and it's, it's an ad campaign, right?
It is. It's an ad campaign to businesses. Here's why you should hire someone with a disability. This is the value in it for you.
And, and it's helpful for me if I think about it, not as an ad campaign, because nobody gets excited about ad campaigns, but rather an education or an awareness campaign. And I think that's the component that's missing. As I've wrapped my head around this, I really think of it similarly to ad council programs that are really just dedicated to that education. You asked about the pillars. Of course, it's the education, but I think this creates, it opens the door for conversations that maybe haven't happened already for increasing partnerships and relationships. Oh, I saw this. Oh, I didn't know Goodwill did this. Oh, I didn't know you were partnering with someone who would have traditionally been considered a competitor. So it is, it may be just semantics, but for me, wrapping my head around it being education and awareness as opposed to marketing is much more effective.
It's a $600,000 request for an education.
Yes.
Awareness campaign, right?
Yes.
Now I'm backing away. Because ultimately that, that's what it is for an unknown work pool of workers, right?
But it's the employers. If we don't educate those employers and get them to understand and get them on board, the doors aren't open. And it's strategically planned. So the, there's the awareness piece first, building up the, the awareness and then following up with the presentation of, of Mr. Lewis to answer the questions and tell you, here's how to do it. So there's months first of the awareness. What is that about? I didn't know that. Oh, look at this. They're talking about employment for people with disabilities. And then here's what you can do with that. Here's how you can use, how you can use this in your business.
I would like to have you make a presentation similar to what you've just done. I've probably trimmed for time to the Disabilities Council.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. I'm on the Disabilities Council as well. So I, I would use their partnership also.
And I do think that that might, you, you're going to get voices of people who identify with lived experience. And so many great things have come from just having that conversation, a conversation with that council. So I would welcome their, their feedback on is this with limited resources, is this the best, fastest way to get to workforce? But if we do a collaborative with other workforce applications, I certainly think you bring a very unique perspective, like immigration folks, you add the richness that we need in our community. Just to make a better, a better community for all. Thank you. I really appreciate learning about this program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Margie.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we have Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa, CSCI.
Good morning. That's really close. I'll back up. I'm Jennifer Walker from ECIA. I'm the Special Programs Manager. And part of my duties include the oversight of our Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa. And of course Kelly Deppmeyer with me, our Executive Director, who overlooks all of the, the umbrella of ECIA and our subsidiaries. So could we go to the next slide, please? I thought I'd start just by laying the foundation of who we are and where we're at, at the second quarter of the year and go from there. As you'll see, CSCI is the HUD coordinated entry lead agency for Dubuque County. Our resource and referral line, it's often known as the homeless hotline, collaborates with six other agencies in the area to provide individuals experiencing a housing crisis with a single point of contact to access resources for housing stabilization. The partners are listed here on the, on the slide, but it includes of course us and Dubuque County General Assistance Program. Next slide, please. At the end of the year, we put together a 2021 impact report to take a look at where we are and how that's really been different from years past. And some of this came about because of our ARPA application to the county. In addition to our mission statement, you'll see our programs listed. They include rapid rehousing. So we are definitely your boots on the ground people. We are finding both temporary and permanent supportive housing for our homeless population here in Dubuque. We also do street outreach. So we're the people that are out at the campsites, under the bridges, down at the mission, trying to meet with people wherever they are to bring them into a homeless, out of homelessness and into housing. We do cover Delaware County and Dubuque County, but I want you to know that we estimate that about 99.9% of our, our people and the people we work with come from Dubuque County. Could I have the next slide, please? What I really want to share with you is some of the statistics from the last year. On the screen, we have our 2021 call volume and impact. The blue line, as you'll note, is calls that we take for Dubuque area labor harvest. We started doing this as the pandemic approached and continue to do it today. And the yellow line is our housing instability calls. We manage this hotline five days a week, eight hours a day with less staff than we've ever had. And yet we took 2,033 instability, housing instability calls in calendar year 2021. Each of those calls we average at about 25 minutes. We took 1,243 food request calls. Those calls take about five minutes each. Of those housing instability calls, we, along with general assistance and our MOU partners, were able to help 421 individuals in 2021. The photos below are local photos from our, from some of our street outreach endeavors. Next slide, please. So to compare these numbers, we want to, to let you know that in typical years, we see a decline in calls in October, November and December. People tend to find family and friends to stay with over the holidays. They go inside to shelters or they do what they do. In 2021, this didn't happen. And in the first quarter of 2022, this didn't happen. Our calls have continued to be high and to increase. For example, the housing instability calls doubled in 2021 from the beginning to the end of the year and into the first quarter of 2022. Looking at it year over year, if you look at our, the bar chart in the lower left, we had approximately 500 calls in 2019 and 2020. Our team took more than four times the number of housing instability calls last year alone with two people on staff who are also providing intensive case management and handling the coordination with our partners. They're handling our coordination with the state and federal grants. And they're doing all the actual intake work with our homeless population. The gray chart in the lower right-hand corner is particularly important. In rapid rehousing, we had 37 active clients. In permanent supportive housing, we had 31 active clients. So 68, that number is going to come back at us. In street outreach, we continue to enroll people throughout the year in the hopes that we could get them housed. Could you go to the next slide, please? This is just a broad overview of our revenue by source and our expenses by source last year. And I, I don't want to read every budget line item to you, but what I, what I particularly interesting for this point of conversation is going to be the amount of COVID funding that we received because this is exactly what we're going to talk to you about when we get to the ask point. We had three different pots of COVID funding to help us with this growing number of homeless people that needed assistance. We have a CDVG CV grant that's going to be in your kind of bright royal blue. We had an emergency solutions COVID one grant from HUD. And then we also had a second round of ESG COVID funding, which is kind of in that peachy tan. So, and it said the other one was the light green. So they're rather large pieces of our budget. And they're all going away by this summer, by July. So could you flip to the next slide, please? How this relates to what we want to ask your help with is this cycle of homelessness. And perhaps you've already seen this. This is something that comes out of the National Alliance to End Homelessness. And they talk about the cycle of homelessness and what it costs taxpayers to not deal with homeless people. If they're out on the street, the estimation is that it's going to cost each tax, each person on the street will cost taxpayers between $30,000 and $50,000 per year. And I'm sure you've all seen this and heard about it and talked about it. When you don't have stable housing or as HUD calls it, housing first, you fall into this cycle in and out of emergency departments, inpatient hospital stays, psychiatric centers, detoxification programs, and of course jail. It results in high public costs and poor health outcomes for individuals. So what we did at CSCI is we looked at all of those federal funding streams, not just the COVID funding streams. And we said, we've got 68 clients that we're housing right now. We estimate on our cost of living in Dubuque County that it would be, it would be about $40,341 to have someone living on the streets to all of those other systems that we talked about. For CSCI to house them, to provide, to provide case management for them and to do all of the things that we do with HUD, with the state and everything else is less than $10,000 a year per person. We do it at a cost of $9,099 per person in the CSCI program. If you multiply that out by 68 clients that we worked with in 2021, the cost to taxpayers would be $618,739 versus an estimated $2.7 million if they were just on the street, those 68 people. Would you flip to the next slide, please? So when we first started looking at this American Rescue Plan proposal to Dubuque County, we, our, our greatest need at that time was help funding that coordinated entry line, that homeless hotline. We had a huge gap and calls were through the roof, as you can see. We had asked for $35,000 for each of three years. Additionally, we had asked for a combined $200,000 for research and development and professional design, designs to try to find more housing for homeless people. Since the time that we submitted our application to the county and today, when we're back here, things have changed. I will tell you that I had no idea how much funding changed until I started working with homeless funding. It changes probably every week for us. We've decided, first of all, that we aren't the entity to be doing research and design and to be doing professional or research and development and professional designs. Other people are coming to town to do that. Other players do that better than we do that. On the other side, on the coordinated entry line, the county has offered $25,000 in purchase of services this year and in past years has offered money, which has helped us close the gap of what it costs us to actually operate the coordinated entry line. So that need is neither, none of those needs are as critical as they were when we first submitted the ARPA proposal. So our new request really goes back to those 24 people that are currently on some kind of COVID funding right now with CSCI that will expire by, by July of 2022. So rather than our first proposal, we'd like you to request to house 24 people for one year at less than $10,000 a year per person. Our request is $218,376. Could you please go to the next slide? So what can we do with $218,376 in county ARPA funding? Well, first of all, we'll potentially save the community $749,000 by having all of those people back out on the street. And just so you understand, as of this morning, we have an additional 45 people on our prioritization list that are looking for housing that we have no money to house. If we dumped these 24 people back on the street, that's just going to be in addition to those 45 that are waiting. It would also help us, give us the time to try to get them to vouchers either through ERA or through the city, which has not had open vouchers for some months because of their, their software transition. And it would also help us get to self-sustaining housing with them as we, you know, if we get intensive case management and a plan ready for them. It'll continue to pay the rent for them, utilities and deposit assistance where needed. And most of all, it's going to prevent 24 people in the Dubuque community from being in shelters or being back on the street. Next slide, please. So that is our request for you today. It's a bit of a shift and we thank you for your consideration and for allowing us some flexibility in what we're asking for. Kelly and I are both here to ask, answer any questions that you might have about what I've just presented to you.
Just one other side note, since we put this presentation together, we will be losing funding July 1 on an additional program that will be ending June 30th. So there'll be 14 additional households besides the 24 that Jennifer just mentioned that will be losing their housing. And at this point, we're not quite sure where we're going to go with them or what we're going to do, but we're going to develop some type of plan for them as well. So that's another critical, critical need too.
That's today.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, we don't know. It just, it's a very volatile funding for homelessness.
So we've got 14 plus 24 plus 45.
Yeah.
Jennifer, what, what is your total ask now? We got all kinds of different numbers here.
Right.
235, 218, 305.
218,376 is my number.
So just forget that whole first column on the left because that was the original proposal when you started taking proposals. But since then, there's other entities that are working on housing for homeless or more affordable housing that we could potentially work with them in providing assistance to place people. So, and our board just decided that this is more of a critical need in just providing assistance versus us trying to develop housing.
And quite frankly, we don't have the staff to do it. We are just trying to handle what we have.
Anne, do you have any questions?
The funding that you're talking about for twenty-four people in the math of two eighteen, is that, that's twelve months of housing? Okay. And where roughly is that housing? If you can just describe, I know it's not one place, but what are the types of housings and generally where are they located?
They're, I'll speak into the microphone. They're all over town. As you might imagine, they're most frequently found downtown or on the bus line. And one of the reasons that this is so heavily concentrated in Dubuque County, and even then in the city of Dubuque, is because of transportation and the myriad other services that need to go with this. Crescent Community Health Center, doctors, hospitals, et cetera.
You'd be working with like Operation Impower with Michelle for housing?
We work closely with Michelle. And one of the things that we had decided to do, rather than get into this whole housing of research and, and design of housing is to work with people like Michelle. And what we do really well is grant writing. So we've been talking to Michelle about a national, another National Housing Trust Fund application as she's buying more properties.
There's also Horizon Development. They're working on a project as well. And actually I just got a voicemail from them while I was sitting here that they did secure an option on some land and they would get priority with their tax credit application if they have a set aside for homeless individuals. And so we look at that as an opportunity to partner as well, that, that they're willing to work with us in housing individuals that would have assistance that would go with it. So another option for us in, in helping people find housing.
Groot and Development has just taken over the management of four properties that we often use. And I'm excited to hear that he's cleaning them up and that they'll be, that there'll be, and the Henry Stout House, that was the old former Y, is another property that he has an option on. So I feel like people are coming in. We've been like daycare and workers, we've been talking about affordable housing. And you know, when we talk about the numbers that it keep going up, it's because we can't find affordable housing for these people too. And instead of getting them placed, we're getting more people that are on the verge of homelessness because they can't find it. So yeah, we'll work with everybody.
And did you have anything?
So are folks in an apartment and they come to you for help? Because they have, you know, instability in their housing? Or is, are these twenty-four plus fourteen, are those individuals that you have a rapid rehousing, meaning they were homeless to begin? And you find them a place?
So HUD has this thing called dynamic prioritization. So when you come into our coordinated entry hotline and you say, I am afraid I'm going to be homeless. We can't even put you into the system until you are technically, literally homeless. And then it's prioritized by a number of things, like if you have a disability or you have any income or how long you've been homeless. So what we however, would like to do with the ARPA funding is help those people that are currently housed stay housed and not have to go into that dynamic prioritization. Cause we don't know if, when they'll get chosen again. And if we can have another year with these folks, basically an extension of COVID funding that we, that we know that the city is going to be opening voucher programs and that we know that we can get them into case management situations where they can get jobs and become more stable and maybe not need any other funding.
At one point, they were literally homeless. So in order for us to assist them, they had to go onto that dynamic prior, excuse me, prioritization list to get funding. So now the fourteen individuals that are going to lose assistance June thirtieth, they're currently in housing. They will become homeless and have to go on that prioritization list. But they're going to fall probably behind those forty-five that are already on there and literally homeless. So they will be literally homeless for a period of time unless there's some way we can work with the funding entity that, that's dropping their funding, which is HUD.
Do they live in your apartments or do they live in apartments just scattered across the community? You have a list of landlords that you work with?
Right. We have landlords that we work with and they're scattered.
Which is another big part of our case management is finding and working with landlords that will take these folks.
That are.
What is your ask from the city of Dubuque?
I don't think we're prepared to go into that right now. They have been our partners in the permanent supportive housing project. We are the administrators for that grant. They pay us forty thousand dollars a year to administrate that grant on top of all of the dollars that go toward rent and deposits, which is roughly a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
City gives you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for rent and deposits?
Plus forty thousand. So close to this ask, a hundred and ninety thousand with the administrative monies.
So what we'll have to do is when they open up their voucher program, which they're hoping they will do sometime in July or June, July, the summer, we'll have to work with them and our social workers will have to work with them to get people on their waiting list so they can get vouchers, which takes time. And then we'll also work with individuals to get on our ERA waiting list, because we cover outside the city limits of Dubuque, in Dubuque County. And the, one of the biggest issues is we'd have to coordinate transportation because most of them get services here in the city.
So walk me through that process of who decides who gets funding and then who writes the check?
Who, which homeless people get funding or which agencies?
You have a board that you presented previously. So you have an applicant that, you know, applies. And so what board or what person makes that decision that they receive funding and then who actually cuts the check?
So HUD has a form called a VI SPADA, which is, you know, it's alphabet soup. And it's a lengthy intake process that puts a person calling our coordinated entry into the prioritization. They decide. When it's, so we really run out of our coordinated entry. We do Dubuque area labor harvest. And then we do these one-time requests, like general assistance or things like that. And those partners decide that. But when it comes to literal housing, it's a HUD prioritization. And it's, you pull what, whichever person goes to the top, provided we can find them. You know, maybe they have children and they need a three-bedroom apartment. You know, if we don't have a three-bedroom apartment, then we go to the person who needs a one-bedroom apartment. Who decides that we get funding is always going to be the state or HUD. And it's based on a yearly application, competitive application process.
And then when we have that funding, so if Suzie and her three kids come to the top of the list, the highest priority, we say, you know, you're next, we need to find you a unit. Then once she finds it, we sign all the paperwork and we actually cut the check from the funding that we're receiving. So typically it's either the city of Dubuque program or the Department of Housing and Development or the Iowa Finance Authority. So it just depends on which funding source. And then we are actually cutting the checks to the landlord. So it's just like our section eight rental assistance program, but it's the homeless program.
Yeah. So no, no money is going to them directly.
No.
And it's actually a reimbursement for CSCI.
Right.
We have to, we have to have written a check for the rent and utilities or whatever to get any reimbursement.
So then we have to apply to HUD or Iowa Finance Authority or whatever programs funding it for that reimbursement.
What is coming from Congress? There's legislation pending for additional COVID relief funds. Are you aware of what's in that?
We don't know yet. You know, it just filters down. It's just, it's so different, the homeless funding than like the section eight voucher funding. It seems as if in our Eastern Iowa Regional Housing Authority programs, we pretty much know and are aware. But a lot of times with our funding, it has to go through the Iowa Finance Authority first. And then we have to apply to them to get the funding. So there's like an extra step for us versus what we go through with the Eastern Iowa Regional Housing Authority. It's just very different. It's so, like Jennifer said, it dynamic and changes every day. So I'm not sure of what's going to be the next amount of funding we're going to get.
And the state, of course, has, I think, more than a billion dollars in their federal rescue funds that the governor is distributing by herself based on her criteria. So what do you have pending with the state of Iowa?
Nothing. The homelessness for the state of Iowa has not been a priority. Any funding that we would apply for would go through the Iowa Finance Authority.
And do you have anything pending with Iowa Finance?
Iowa Finance Authority, yes. We do have an application pending with them. It'll be three years?
Three years and we, they allowed one applicant per region. So we have applied with Clinton and Jackson Counties, Dubuque and Delaware Counties through CSCI. So it will serve as a pass-through. And if, when that comes through, if and when that comes through, it would be roughly a half a million dollars for three years. We don't have any rules or regulations on that, other than to know that it's short to medium-term housing.
But as you say, there's no housing need apparently, less than one percent in Delaware.
It's.
Yeah.
Mostly that money would be spent in Dubuque, I would assume.
Yep.
But regardless, there will be a gap. These people will have to become literally homeless to apply for any of those, any other funding we have. They will have to be on the street and be picked all over again.
So the twenty-four and the fourteen, so the thirty-eight households as of July one will have to reapply, become homeless to get housing. We can't continue it. And then the forty-five that are on there would be the next ones assisted. So if we do end up with a contract with the state for the Dubuque and Delaware funding, we'll basically be able to help those forty-five, but we'll still have the thirty-eight besides whoever else calls in between now and July one. It just doesn't get any better. It just doesn't. And an issue too is the waiting list for the city of Dubuque voucher and for ERA's voucher program. Our waiting list, and we've been doing lease up with ERA, is eighteen months. City of Dubuque is longer than that. So it's just, even with some of the additional funding they have, the demand is so high, we, we can't keep up. So for any of our people to transition to vouchers, you put them on the waiting list, they're still going to wait.
It just is, I, I've seen your numbers and you make well the case that it's cheaper for the county to literally keep a person in a house for a year than it is for them to be homeless. But ten thousand dollars per person. There, there's a disconnect between the people we all serve and the general population. Right? Ten thousand dollars per person is what we're spending on housing. And we have other folks who didn't pay their real estate taxes that were due last month. And there's just all kinds of need. So I appreciate that it's, that we don't see, we don't see stability in housing. What you're asking us to do doesn't provide any more stability in affordable housing. It just keeps these twenty-four people in housing that they eventually are going to have to lose to qualify for any other program. There, you repeat the mantra that they must eventually be homeless to qualify for homeless assistance. I, I don't, I don't see how we strategically make a difference here. That, that's what I just don't, I don't see that. Maybe this is an application you make the week that it hurt, that it happened and you have an immediate need. It's a, a bridge, kind of a bridge loan kind of thing. I, I don't know. I mean, ultimately, all these folks are going to be homeless.
That's not the case. And I'm sorry if that was unclear. There are different kinds of housing. There is a housing called permanent supportive housing, which is for the, the most critically and acutely homeless. They have long-term mental illness, long-term disabilities. The type of funding that we are looking at here for the next year comes from our emergency solutions grant funding, which is supposed to be medium-term housing. There are people that something catastrophic has happened to them, but they're not chronically homeless. So, but those are, we have many more of those type that something catastrophic has happened to than the permanently, than the ones that need it permanently. And when you looked at our budget, a very large portion of that nine thousand dollars goes to case management for us to help them get on their feet, to get the help that they need and to become self-sustaining. Even a voucher is permanent. I mean, once they're obtained, as long as they're able to stay with the rules, it's permanent. They're not, the intention isn't for them to go back out on the street.
The part of that case management is for our, I mean, that's a requirement of the emergency shelter grant program is that we can't just house them. You have to provide counseling. You have to develop a work plan. They have to meet with our, our social workers regularly. So it's not a matter of here's, unlike the voucher program, I mean, once they're ready for the voucher program, unless you're on family self-sufficiency, you can be on it forever and there's no counseling with it. But that's another whole long story of why we don't have more FSS money. I don't know. But with our emergency shelter grant program, there is the counseling component as well. So they're just not housed.
One more follow-up. And so I know you have a lot of partners. One, thanks for being here, shedding light on, on this issue and the complexities of homelessness and housing. So it's not an easy one to solve. My question's related to general assistance. I'm seeing large call volumes and seeing what you're saying is high need. And then when we get to our awards and we've had a change in our system, those are substantially down. What role does your organization play in getting leads or referrals to our general assistance?
So the way that the MOU is designed between the six partners right now is that it's a poll system. It's not a push system. So we will take the intake and we at CSCI are the coordinated entry. So everything goes into a database. And from that, they have weekly poll meetings where the partners discuss and look at who's on the list and who can help whom or how much they can help. And I think there, I don't know what was happening on the backend with general assistance, but there was some kind of a disconnect where nothing was happening. And I thought we had gotten that kink kind of worked out when we brought all the MOU partners together. And again, explain that this is really a, a poll. You, each entity needs to come to this spreadsheet and say, I can help this person. Or I'm going to have this person fill out an application for general assistance. And I know that general, the county has tried to narrow down the application and kind of reduce some barriers. So last I had heard was a few months ago, and it seems like things were ticking along. Is that not the case again?
Randy Renison is here and he would be.
Okay.
Glad to jump in. I just talked to him late last week. If you want an update on the general assistance program, I think Randy can probably do that.
It's not my request, but thank you for answering your question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I don't think it's helpful to have information that's several months old. When you're talking about this dynamic flow of partners and you're getting texts that are changing things dramatically today. If we want to know what the status is today, Jennifer, I would just say, status today of how it's working as compared to a couple of months ago would be Randy Renison.
The status today is that we have twenty-four people who will have no funding in July.
But some of them not have reached self-sufficiency as they work through.
We sure hope so. We've got like, at the beginning, I know there were a lot of numbers, but we've been working with sixty-eight people and some of them ebb and flow. What I do know is that the need hasn't gone away. COVID, we might not be wearing masks. I get to travel to Europe now. And kids are back in school, but things aren't, our call volume isn't back to where it was by a long shot. And this whole inflation, inflation and just the, the general insecurity and instability in the housing market is freaking people out.
We'll move forward. Thank you very much, Jennifer.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time today. We appreciate it.
We're running just about an hour behind now, so. We'll go with the eleven fifteen. Want to do that now or you want to wait until we get through some of this other stuff? 11:15, Work Session: Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Fiscal Year 2023 Purchase-to-Service Application Materials.
I will say good morning, good afternoon. This is Ed Raiber, and in your packet is draft application for community partners for the county's purchase of service program. I realize I believe I have a typo in there of 2021, which I believe I have a typo in here that's supposed to be 2022, but it says 2021 right down there at the bottom. But this is the same, principally the same document that, that we had provided to you last week. You had some questions and, at staff, thanks to Stella particularly. We went through it again, provided some additional information. And the signature page, which unfortunately was omitted last, last week in the packet, that just got cut off. So what we're hoping to do is provide a set of questions to our partners out in the community around the county for them to apply to the program that you budgeted during the budget process. And provide roughly a month for them to work on that. After about one week after releasing this, whenever that is, I'll be proposing to have a webinar or like a Zoom call essentially for partners in the community. We'll record that. So in case there's anyone that, that was unable to do that, they could, we could post that and see that to help them provide better applications back to you. And I'm proposing, this document still says April 25th, but you know, whatever sort of timeframe you're comfortable with, one month, whatever that is, we would do that and then assemble those and bring those back to you so that you can read those applications. And hopefully they'll assist you in sifting through them and making a decision as soon as you feel comfortable.
Doesn't address any priorities?
It, it does not. We, the staff have not assigned any of those as priorities. You have not done that in the past. If, looking at fiscal year '23 here, I guess I would say this is where you are today. Staff would be more than helpful to help the board work through that in preparation for, if it chooses to do a program like this again in FY '24. This is where we are today.
Do we have any interest in listing some priorities? We did a survey and folks told us what they wanted us to make a priority. That was with relief funds.
I, I, you know, I think, you know, we had the opportunity and I was an advocate for pushing for prioritization and categorization of American Rescue Funds. That's 20 million. This is 600,000. So if we can do it in a timely fashion, I think it makes sense. The American Rescue Funds application is already out there and we're going through that process now. But we, I believe we would have to work quick and we'd have to be able to come to decisions in order to aid this process, or we'll just be delaying it longer.
That is, my concern is the continual delaying of getting things moving. We're working, you know, trying to get through all this ARP stuff. I don't want this hanging around until after July 1st again, because these organizations are trying to get budgets together. Also that they can know which way they have to go. And we tend to keep stumbling along here and don't get anything done, which I think we need to, we need to be the leaders and take control and move things forward. I don't know that it has to be broken down into categories. I think we can have discussion and decide where we want the money to go. If you just feel that, that we can categorize it and we can do it in a timely fashion, I'm fine with that. Sounds worth.
Would you be opposed to having a statement included that says the Board of Supervisors has listed priorities for these applications, including, so if somebody is listening, they could write this down, including childcare, workforce development, safety. We could, we, we certainly know what, what we talk about as our priorities. We do that. We've been doing that here.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to just add that on the application, I, I guess I don't have a problem. I don't know that I would go with workforce because we have a billion dollars in requests for workforce ready. I don't think that I'm going to be putting more money towards workforce on the purchase of service when you have several of these applications already on ARP. Understand what I'm saying?
Well, obviously, we're in the midst of funding and funding, and that was one of the points I had, but I do think that we could begin, the, these are not federal funds we're talking about. These are budgeted dollars that we've collected from individuals. So saying, I understand, we don't, haven't done the, the, the work and the prep to say we would like to receive grants from these things that we think are gaps. But we do ask for people to give us feedback and a report back and any data they can share. But we could make a general statement saying that we find these things to be priorities that we would fund with purchase of services as compared to anything.
And again, I'm, I'm, I'm not against it. If we're going to do it, it has to be done very timely, that this keeps moving forward. That's, that's my biggest thing is, this has got to keep moving forward, that we get the applications out there. They have time to fill them out. It comes back in, we can go through and make a determination and have this keep moving, that we're done well before July. That these organizations know where they stand when they start their budget.
Agreed, and we are still reviewing, you know, ARPA funds and still haven't, not even done our internal ones yet. And there's another 40, how many are waiting? How many we have left? 40, 60? A big number. So a big number is still that submitted back in September, right? So that's, that's the other dilemma that we have. And so I think we owe it to them to get through them. But, you know, these are, like you said, general basic dollars and generally, Kevin, maybe you can jump in, have to follow kind of state code of Iowa related to what counties do. And so we certainly have that subset where the ARPA funds give us a little more flexibility. And so, you know, these funds and this program, am I invented called Purchase of Service in the past, has been going on for decades. And generally, I think has, has, has served the public's need. We did make a change and lowered the budget substantially. So it may make it harder for the board to make decisions. So I, I, I'm open, but if we do prioritization, categorization, we've got to be, we've got to be efficient. And that's also somewhat tipping your, your hand on ARPA funds as well. So, you know, we haven't made too many decisions of those. I think we've, you know, we've approved one for sure. You know, by resolution or by least motion of the board and documents, might even been a resolution. And then we've kind of tentatively said, we think we'll fund those verbally here. We've got a lot of work to do to, to approve these others. But I think our mistake was, you know, with ARPA funds, we didn't categorize, we didn't prioritize, we just opened it up. And I've said that multiple times, and now we're dealing with that. And they're good, they're good problems to have. I mean, they're great, great projects, but I think it just comes down to the board making decisions.
Yeah, are you for that?
I don't know. I, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't know how that relates to my request that we put in some, identify some priorities for spending.
What, what priorities would you like? Ideas?
Pardon me?
What kind of priorities would you?
I, I, I gave some, Harley. The point is that somehow we think adding a line, a line of language saying, these are priority projects the county would look for delays this, and I don't know why it does. It's a sentence.
I don't think it should be ad hoc. So I mean, we're just doing this on the fly. I think if we are going to list priorities, we should be prepared and have some discussion, not lengthy, but hopefully robust. And eventually have some formal action. I mean, they're approving a document with a list of those priorities. You know, if we're going to go through that process, that's the process we should be going through.
And can we do that today? Can we do that next Monday?
I, I think we'd at least, you know, I'm normally a person that acts quick, but I think at least a week in putting it on the agenda. So now the public can hear and potentially during public comment weigh in would make sense. So I'm open to that process. I just don't think we, as Supervisor Potash just said, spend months doing it.
That's my concern is that it gets drug out a month down the road and we still don't have anything done. That's my biggest concern. If we set it for next week and we come up with something to put on the bottom of it for the priorities, that I think you'd be able to handle that.
I believe that we could type that on, yes.
And that was going to be the priorities for this program, not ARPA?
For your services, right.
More defined, simpler.
Keep it simple.
And would we anticipate that those priorities would be for this program and hopefully be leading indicators for future boards? Or just this year?
If I
I'm asking my colleagues.
Sure.
I think the problem this year is we have all these ARPA funds that we're still trying to swim through. And now we're throwing this on and it's, it's going to be, get somewhat discombobled. I think next year's priorities may be different because the ARP funds will be pretty well expended, so we can.
What I would hope to see is that next April, whatever the makeup of the Board of Supervisors is, this is exactly the thing that trips us up again and again. Goals, priorities, that's what we, that's what, who's ever on the board needs to be at. Finish the budget and then we don't take time off to do other things. We get right drilled down into what is it that citizens have told us we should be spending their money on? What are the priorities that we see? What are the gaps in the community? And, and this has been, it has, you know, the pandemic sat on a lot of things. We were doing some of that work and it got pandemicked. And then the board makeup has changed. And now we have two members of the, two seats on this board up for reelection. So I don't know that it fits to do it this year. But it should be done by whatever Board of Supervisors exists next year, should take up this work. So for all future times, we know what priorities we have, what are our benchmarks to look back? How do you check back? How do you get data? Did we make any change? We need to move toward that. But that discussion would take months, Harley, to your point. That's not why I'm asking. I'm saying we're using rewards repeat from us as we talk about what we support, what we don't support, what we're not inclined to, inclined to do. Is there something wrong with just adding that as a sentence to a purchase of services? These are priorityers for the Board of Supervisors. Priorities include, still gives all the leeway for other people to do other things, but.
Right, and I think we would have had more direction with it. But last year was a disaster.
Agreed.
Plain and simple. Everything got piled on. We were trying to get through the purchase service. The ARP came in. Everything got backlog there. We're still going through all that. It, it just, some things you can't, can't change. We have to keep working through it. And obviously, once we get through the ARP thing, I think Purchase-to-Service project program will move forward easily.
Would you be comfortable if I work with Ed, Stella over this week and we bring you a final draft and then we'll just do possible priority sentences? And then you can, you're going to accept A, B, or C, or whatever it might be, and then that goes out for publication?
I, I think having one supervisor define priorities with staff is not a good idea. We're a board. That should be a board discussion.
Right.
But leading it, you know, and having the, the pen in your hand and staff at your, you know, beck and call to, to divine your own priorities is, is not a good idea. I think it needs to be a board discussion and decision.
But as a starting point, just to get?
You can certainly bring yours, Supervisor Potash, and yours, Supervisor McDonough, and I can bring mine. But to direct staff, hey, here's the priorities, you know, I will have different priorities than each one of you and potentially you will as well. And I think we need to have that discussion as a board.
If you, how about if you would submit your ideas to Ed? I would submit mine to Ed and can submit hers to Ed. Hers, Ed, that we could have that on the discussion for next Monday. All of them would be on there.
Possibility. I mean, that's one, one method, if you wanted to use it. It's kind of.
To keep it moving forward is that way Ed would have all of it?
It'd be good if you had a format of something that we could, you know, use. So, you know, hate to have, you'd hate to have, you know, 100 priorities in 100 pages and the other supervisors bring three bullet items. And so.
I'm thinking if each supervisor had a couple.
I think we're looking for like, if each supervisor provided us two things, like
Right.
Somebody is worried about homelessness, someone's worried about childhood.
Well, the dilemma of those in the categories with these previous, unless we're going to do things a lot different, there's not two categories. There's, I think we had six, four, six in the past. So maybe we could start with that. We had categorized these in the past, correct? I don't know. So I mean, that might be something to go back to.
After the apps came in, Stella, you and I kind of talked about how we might, what are the kind of these, how do they kind of fall together, right? After all the applications come in is when we attempted to kind of categorize it. We never set priorities.
We use that for future years too. So it wasn't just, you know, use one year, it was use multiple years.
I think what we're looking for is the priorities of this board. What, what do you, Supervisor Wickham, Supervisor Potash, and Supervisor McDonough? And I think Supervisor McDonough said it well in that your constituents, the citizens of Dubuque County are telling you how to spend the money. So use that information that you're speaking to the citizens about to determine what you think the priority should be for this purchase of service program for $600,000. If each of you were to bring forward two priorities that you've heard about or that are important to you as a supervisor, that is great. We put that on the application and then who knows who's going to apply. They could apply outside of those, those priorities. They can, you know, I feel like we're, we're losing the forest for the trees here. It's, this is just priorities for people to consider when they're filling out the application, not the end-all, be-all for how you're going to award the money.
If consensus on that?
Consensus B.
Ed, we'll each submit our priorities to Ed for next Monday's discussion and we'll move it forward from there.
Hearing is in a short form. I heard two. I think I mentioned four or six, but back to my colleagues, what would be acceptable?
I don't care. Three, four. I mean, we only need, we don't want to have 12 priorities on it. I think, I think it's $600,000. If we have, here are our six top priorities, you know, that would be pretty good idea of where the money would, our priorities for spending the money. And it doesn't have to fall into one of those six to be funded.
So a few, a few.
So if you have three or four, that's fine. You can submit them. I may only submit two and may have six. I don't know, but we'll just, we'll pick out our top priorities and move forward with the next Friday or next Monday that Ed can get this thing done and keep it moving forward.
I don't have any other changes suggested to the document. And I was glad to see the robust signature page with instructions. But I cleared up about everything that I said.
Right.
Good, your question answered.
Yep.
Okay, next we'll go to the 11:25, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding ARP, Applications Categorized Under Support to Public Health Response. We want to stop it, stop, start at the top of the list again with Clark University. We want to stop it, stop, start at the top of the list again with Clark University. They had left that on. And it said the McDonough, McDonough Foundation had supported some of that project for the Dubuque Youth and Family Resilience Project.
Yes. I mean, not this part she's asking about has not been funded. That's why it's, it's, it's a request for additional funding for more of the same work.
Seventy-four thousand nine hundred. Okay, your thoughts on that?
I'd certainly, you know, almost every one of, you know, applicants had merit. There were some of the easy ones we were able to pick off. So this certainly has some merit. I would be open to, to funding at a certain level.
I would be open to funding also. And is your thoughts?
Certainly all the applications highlight needs that we are experiencing as a community coming out of a pandemic. I personally am looking for high level projects that can make significant change. That's what I'm looking for. So if we're going to fund all of the applications as an acknowledgement that they made a good application and have a good idea, I disagree with that. That is not the way I would spend our limited dollars. So that's how I have approached this. And I, I also don't think all of these need to be decided now. Things are just, as you heard from ECIA, things are changing. Things are getting funded. We had things pulled from what I saw Ed sent to us over the weekend and in the packet was different than it was before. Things are constantly changing. So I look at this as who should we fund so that they know we're funding them? Right? So it's like we are with, we, we have consensus that we want to put some of the limited funding toward that. So it is again, I'm repeating myself. It's a different way of assessing the distribution of limited resources. There are other things, other projects that people are working on right now in our community that are going to come for, to us for requests for ARP funds.
I understand that. And we've had these people had their request in since last September, and I think they deserve either a yes or a no.
Right.
Something instead of.
Right. So I guess another thing I'll put out there that happened at the regional governing board and you saw May put that up in the comments. When the state takes over the funding of brain health services. It is unclear. We don't have a final answer. And I shout out to the county attorney in the back of the room, whether we can use any other buckets of funding to fund brain health services if they're going to be restricted by the, to only the money coming from the state of Iowa. So Hillcrest access me care platform expansion. We gave them some funding from a mental health fund balance. We said it was for brain health work. Are we in a race to make that decision before the end of June, when the state takes over? Or are we prohibited from doing that? Can, that, that's the un, the unknown. So I spent part of Saturday with Hillcrest with the veterans. They were meeting in Hillcrest. And, and that's the question. Can we purchase services through this other process on an ongoing basis to support something that also is brain health services? We don't know, we don't know that. If we're going to be prohibited from helping Michelle Michaelakis in the future because the state of Iowa was in charge of that funding stream, that's significant, that significantly changes the work we're doing. Am I, am I being clear about?
I understand that. I mean, so your ARP request, the access me care, you know, the ECR did pick up large, about half of it roughly, or whatever it was.
No, I don't think the ECR has paid any of the, the new access me care platform expansion request. We've paid for some of it. They, the notes are that they originally asked for $315,000. We provided through our fund balance, $78,000, seventy-eight seven, leaving 232,866 on the table.
Right.
And right now the region for the next 30 days is looking at final projects that the region is going to fund. I don't know if the rest of that will be funded possibly by the region.
Well, obviously that one, okay, we can, we can hold off on that until the region makes the determination. I'm not saying we have to make a decision on everyone today. There's some that maybe we can say, okay, I'm good with that. We can move that one forward, put it at the bottom of the list as taken care of. Everyone we get off the list is one less we have to keep dealing with.
Right. So what do we have on the list here? We're going to hold for Hillcrest. Um, what do we want to do about, we've got a million dollar request from Mercy One. Um, I am a no on a unity point. It's listed as Finley Hospital, but it's unity point. I am, I remain a no on financing reconstruction for PPE. I am a no on that.
I'm a no on that one also. Jay was on that one.
I think we have consensus. So I appreciate you speaking your mind.
The thing is, it's not public comment time.
The Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque Every Child Reads did have a discussion with Nancy and Alex. That request is down to 240,000 from 450. It'd be 80,000 a year for three years.
Do you support that?
I said I was supportive of it, but not at the 450. I think I would be supportive at 80,000 a year for three years.
I would agree with that. We have consensus on the every child reads.
Agreed. Yeah. Two forty, I think is the number I heard. Eighty times three.
Uh, Dubuque County Fair Association, we were at 100,000.
I think that was full consensus, wasn't it?
Pardon?
Wasn't that full consensus, 100,000?
I believe at that time it was. That was my memory as well, but, but are you still there?
I was. I'm definitely in favor of helping out the fairgrounds because they do draw a lot of people in. We need to keep them on their feet. So I have no problem with the 100,000. That's what our consensus was. I'm good with it. That can be moved off Dubuque County firefighters, the volunteer recruitment. I think we were in consensus on that at 25,000 added to the John Hancock.
The first year to see what we get back.
Yeah. I was, and I was thinking it should be its own funding and, and.
But it is.
Hancock program as is, but you know, it's more money to the firefighter. So it's good, certainly to ask for 700,000. We only have 25,000, but you know, we'll, we'll make it work.
I think it is, it is separate, Jay. It's for training. It's not, it's actually not part of the Tom Hancock Award, but I think we talked about, it would go out at the same time as the Tom Hancock Award for training. That if they wanted, if they had somebody that needed uh, training for paramedic, they could apply to that 25,000 to pay for that training.
Fair enough.
Fair enough with you, Ann.
Yeah, I think we were trying to do something. I've heard more feedback since, but that we got to do something. I think there was consensus to move forward on that. And we'll get feedback.
Did you want more or 25 enough to see how it works? If we need to put more there, we always can, I guess.
I'm, I'm fine with that. It, it may change before we get it off the ground. Um, but I would need Tom Berger to give some additional information on that. So food pantry, we had consensus on that, I believe.
Like consensus at 175, okay?
Yep, that's my memory.
Uh, the VNA, they were going to talk to the board of health. You know if there's anything back on that, Ian, or?
Well, they didn't really talk to the board of health. The board of health talked about the idea. And then the disabilities council talked about it too. And Ed, you thought maybe you had already given us some feedback about this?
Must not have been very definitive because at least I don't remember that way. I mean, did they support it? The dollar amount? Yes, no, maybe the dollar amount. I didn't see any of that. But yeah. All right. But at least it was offered for discussion.
Yes.
Fair enough. That was our only request. So, um, fair enough. Let's back to the board.
I, I did, I wrote down a comment that Dr. Schultz said at the meeting, this was regarding the VNA. The VNA application in specific. And he said that those are, that is the work with some of the most vulnerable people who have the most marginal health. And that VNA's case management with them would be a critical stabilization for public health. He saw that as, he, I think he was quite a strong proponent of that. I don't know if that came through in Samantha's comments to you, but that's what I heard him say. Oh, and I think the rest of the board kind of rallied around that. So I think they were fine with the VNA request. Um, and they also, you know, appreciated very much what Mercy One's doing with their, um, you know, their people in public health recognizing that that Mercy One mobile unit has the opportunity to make significant change. I would suggest we take that and just kick that down the road a bit and, and just, is that going to be a big dollar item if we?
Yeah, I'm certainly interested in talking about Mercy One. Are we still on the Dubuque VNA?
I know we're on the VNA too. Yes. Do you want to keep the VNA moving forward or at that amount or what? Excuse me.
I propose $50,000 for the VNA.
I would support that.
I can support that also. Go with 50,000 for the VNA. Next is the Finley Hospital. I think we said that everyone was.
You denied Finley?
You denied that request?
I didn't. I think my comments were that the, the two major hospitals should receive some level of funding. Since this funding is coming from health related issues, but I'm not here to, you know, argue with my, my colleagues. So if it's zero, it's, I understand consensus.
We did obviously have something there because it was at 100,000. So I don't know if we had consensus at 100,000.
I think when Jay made these comments last time, then you said, well, maybe we should look at it differently. And then that's how we ended it. But I, I am, when you look at all the needs, this was for reconstruction of a room. I don't think that's supporting the public health response. It's not. It's, it's renovating the space and that's not in, in my opinion, supporting the public health response.
Or COVID supplies and pandemic supplies. So I, I agree it is remodeling a space and they had a few other needs that were unique. But, uh, you know, they, they had asked, these are large amounts of federal funds, but I'm comfortable with 100,000. But if the board is at zero, I would say, you know, move forward.
I would say if I do anything for the hospitals, they both get the same. So I would do 100 for them and 100 for Mercy and.
I wouldn't, I, I don't support that. I don't support that.
Okay.
I think these are each projects and each have to stand on their own legs. Otherwise it looks just like we're writing, we're writing the check to this major health provider and to this major health provider. I don't think that's what people want us, we're supposed to, everyone tells us how much, how hard these decisions are and they are, but then we should have rationale.
I don't agree with the Mercy million dollars for the brain health portion of it, which they tried to pull off with the ECR and that didn't work for the fund balance and I just have a they kind of went out and bought this large RV and to put vaccinations out. They're kind of, they are a business.
Because they did that, the community, Crescent community is not launching a mobile unit to be out with folks who are homeless, you know, the full public health response. So Mercy is, is the game on that right now. If we want to use a mobile unit to deliver public health, it's mercy. It's a novel thought, but there were lots of things attached to it, I think for support.
I was also less supportive related to the brain health connection of it. Um, but since they've been here, they have, you know, shown various stops for vaccinations, for testing, and then even education awareness. I am supportive of the mobile thing. I think, uh, you know, certainly they've already spent the money. It's already in place. And this would backfill, uh, you know, that funding. And so I don't have a problem with that. I think having a, a mobile response and having, being more prepared for the next health issue. And this would, would do it. I would be supportive of the funding. I did mention in, in, when they were here. And I would want to have some type of agreement with them or in our agreement. I would generally want to have, know that that's going to be used in Dubuque County. Um, a high percentage of the time or certain X amount of days. And so if the boards are comfortable with that, I'm, I'm comfortable in providing close to their full allotment of funding. And we'll work through the details, but I just, you know, I think, I think it's a good thing. I think it's, they've proven just in the last six months that they can get it out to the public. And, uh, it's one method of being prepared.
So Jay, are you saying that you're, you would be close to a million dollars?
I would.
And I would not be at a million dollars. That's, we should consider them as somebody maybe we want to have another conversation with to see. I think they pared it down significantly when they were in the room talking to us. I thought it was down to 250,000.
Chris, I think we had a no one earlier. That was my scoring at home.
Finley, we left in. At 100, there's going to be more discussion over that. And Hillcrest with the access me care, that's just going to hold to see how the ECR handles it. The next, that one's probably going to be sitting for about two, three months. So it's on until the central region decides what they're going to do.
Out from me.
Pardon?
Finley, I think people are trying to take notes to see if there's consensus or yes or no's. And the question became what to do about Finley's request.
I think Jay and I were both in favor of giving Finley some money. Correct?
Yes, yes. And.
We didn't come together on a number. The Mercy One Foundation, Jay is at the full and is not, where are you at with an M?
Well, I have notes from February 28th that said that they're looking for $300,000 over three years. They'd like a three-year commitment, but they were asking for $100,000 for each year. That's my notes from February 28th.
Now you say that, I do remember that. It was a hundred thousand, three years. But they was at, Ian?
February 28th.
At 250 down. I'm not sure.
That was their other funding sources. They received a quarter of a million dollars from Mercy One. And another quarter of a million dollars from another foundation. Been receiving some funding, so they're not at the million dollar need any longer. Been receiving some funding, so they're not at the million dollar need any longer.
I do remember the, but I would be supportive of the 100,000 a year for the three years.
I would be there too.
300K? It sounds like we have consensus. I would be, was favoring the full amount, but I'm, I'm willing to work with the consensus, the board. So 300,000 is the number that's in the spreadsheet.
Okay, the North East, uh, aging, we had 25,000. Well, that was from mental health, one balance. Operation and Power, I think we had consensus at 291.5 for one year, was it?
I might have voted against that. I can't remember.
The request was, yeah, 495 is, first year was 291.500 and second year was roughly about the same.
Could someone maybe add in the notes, put consensus if we, if we get this done instead of stay?
I, I'm fine with the 291.500 as we previously discussed.
I am, Jay, or Ian, sorry.
No, I never know.
But I am good with the 291 funded for one year. Through the Salvation Army and St. Patrick's Church, we had consensus on both of them.
My memory as well.
That would be all we have for the public health response external.
What did you decide for Finley?
Pardon?
What did you decide for Finley? Unity One, what did you decide?
Uh, Finley, Jay was at 100,000, correct, Jay?
I think that was my, that was a couple of weeks ago and I said at least 100. I don't, can't remember how we came to that, but that's in the spreadsheet as today. And I think, you know, the part, as Supervisor McDonough said, it was for, you know, enhancing an area to store PPP and other things for future pandemics or have availability. They had other items in there and so that was probably the most connected with COVID. So I'm comfortable with 100,000 if the board would support that. If the board is interested in more, I'm also interested in those discussions.
I would, I would be in line with 100,000.
You have consensus on that.
I am a no on that. That takes us to the next page.
So with those external, with, with the external, uh, public health applications, then are these numbers that you are instructing us to move forward with in preparation of a resolution?
I would be, I would be, yes. I would be, yes. But maybe before we get that, did we do Clark? I mean, there's one hanging. Did Clark get?
Well, Clark.
Is there consensus on the board to do Clark? Do you want to fund Clark?
Well, I thought you wanted help with funding Clark.
I'm a trustee there. Of course I'll take the county's money for Clark. My point is that we're supposed to be doing high level here.
We listened to all the presentations for support to public health. Just trying to get us to move through this section because we're listening to presentations on the next section and we're going to have to go through that. We have to start making decisions. They're not easy. I understand that, but if we don't move forward, we're not getting anything done.
I've heard both Supervisor Wickham and Supervisor Potoff support the Clark University project.
Correct. You're the only one who hasn't said that. So I mean, if you don't support it, that would weigh. Okay, then I think we have consensus.
We have consensus. Clark.
For the full amount?
Yes.
That would be a yes.
The 74,900.
That would take your total to 1,453,238 that you would like us to prepare a resolution for?
I think that's the next step.
Right. The only one that we wouldn't have taken care of in this category yet is the access care, but we have to wait to see what happens with the, the Central Region may end up funding some of that starting next year.
The other ones with numbers in their categories, that the numbers that the boards support above. And I think the next step is we prepare a resolution that we have agreed on these, we've discussed these. And then the next step would be creating documents and other contracts, but at least to get it through a resolution process, what I would like to do.
Right, yes.
And I would not, because I think any of these, if we run out of funds again, and there's an opportunity to do, there's more things coming in. Right? So I think that.
I understand there could be more things coming in. But we opened it up, we opened up the applications and we had a deadline on it.
But we have violated that.
I think we deserve, the people that had put in and, and that, you know, by the time they're supposed to deserve at least to know whether there is a going forward or not. I know there's more coming in, but maybe we should open it back up again and have everybody reapply. I don't know, but we can't just keep throwing more on top of the pile without taking care of what we already have there.
So is the 1 million, I can't see that. It's very small.
453.
Is that how much we have allocated from which bucket budget director? Where's this funding coming from?
So that 1,453 would come out of the ARPA funds remaining, not the, um, the loss category, not the lost revenue. It would be directly out of the 8.9 million uh, remaining ARPA funds. You haven't made any determination on what to do with that other piece yet.
Did we get the other funds yet?
No, we have not. They're anticipated to come May 10th.
So from the initial funding that we had, that we moved all to our own, our own account?
It hasn't been moved. Um, it has just been allocated.
So from the funding that we've allocated to our own account, these funds would be distributed from that?
No. No, these would be distributed from the remaining ARPA 8.9 million.
That we haven't received yet.
We have received nine and a half million total. So we've reached 9,450,000 of the total allocation. The second tranche, as they refer to it, will be expected on May 10th, I believe is the date.
So can we spend this money out of the money that we have or are we spending it out of the money that's coming?
It would be spent out of the total, I would say. Obviously, we're not spending funds that we don't have in hand today. I wouldn't recommend allocating out external funding beyond the nine and a half million that we have in hand prior to getting the second tranche.
But you feel 1.453 is okay based upon the funding we received so far?
If the board.
I mean, not okay. We're, we're able to spend it based upon.
We are able to spend that, yes.
And at least appropriate it.
Yes.
As the checks aren't going out next week. We are appropriating and making those decisions. So going back to what I, I think we would create a resolution with those uh, column E numbers and the items, and then the board can vote on that moving forward and that gives staff then the ability to reach out, prepare additional documents, I think that we would anticipate.
Yes.
To actually transact the funding.
You add in the internal application we've already funded. Now we're in this category at 2.32 million dollars.
Yes.
With the radios.
So could, could we go to the next page? There's a lot of low-hanging fruit here that needs to be removed.
That was on the agenda. What?
The support the public health response internal. Can we not talk about that because it doesn't say that?
Support the public health, yeah, both of them. Yeah, we can do both.
So we need, Ed, there's things in there. You, you're working on the detail, right? Like, um, the bottle fill station, $7,000.
I, I would point out quickly that you did approve the bottle fill stations and the cleaning equipment during the regular budget. So those are taken care of.
Right.
There's several of those like that. The generator at the courthouse.
The generator, yes.
So there's just some cleanup work needed there. And that's, that's fine. It's, it's a documented motion.
That's why you'll notice on each of these, uh, there's a date on when it was last updated because that's an important reference point for you. So, uh, after you, uh, this meeting will at some point end and, uh, we'll shoot this, uh, kind of back out to you just to kind of look at it. And it, uh, that version of it will show that, uh, just as, uh, Stella noted, the generator for the courthouse, I believe, was funded through uh, the county budget process, a portion of the video court, uh, 32,000 of that leaving 152 in ARPA that was not fulfilled so far through your county budget process as well as the bottle fill stations and the cleaning expenses, which were, um, the facilities director put into this upcoming fiscal year and last, and the current fiscal year.
But item 43, we've never heard from them.
That is, that is correct.
Item 44, we haven't decided what funding's going to happen there because we're waiting to hire staff.
I think the, the big reason we haven't decided on a lot of these is because we intentionally delayed internal applications.
We were doing the external first.
Yes, we were doing the external first and when there was an exception clearly on there that, that occurred, um, and I'm happy to support that. But yeah, we hadn't intent, we haven't reviewed any of the internal applications.
Health Department didn't bring this forward as part of their budget because ARPA requests did come from departments during their budget process. The Health Department did not bring forward line 43.
Right, they did not.
They did not bring forward line 43.
That's dead.
Line 49, well, they don't think it's dead. That's something we're going to have to make some kind of communication to them. Line 49, Sunny Crest Manor, 4.8 million dollars. There's been no presentation on that. So we, we need to circle back to some of these to see.
If, if we just, the board decides to do internal. So I mean, I think just, we, we haven't made that decision. I think the decision was to do external first.
Presentation on.
And I would still stick to that.
We, we did, Harley. The departments made the presentations during their budget process. That's where we first heard about the radios.
Correct. We just didn't do.
During Tom Berger's EMA presentation.
My, my point is, we didn't, the board supervisors has not decided to work with those and we decided to do external first. And that's where I'm still at. I would like to do the external, get through all those applications, make those decisions and come back to internal. That's the process I would advocate to.
What Anne is saying is that when our internals gave their budget presentations is when they were given their presentation on their request. I get that portion of it. Oh.
So some of those were missed.
Pardon?
Some of these requests were missed in the budget presentations. And so the question to my staff is, what does that mean? Are they withdrawing them? Are they not doing them? You don't know?
No, I think it was more, um, the, the two that were aligned with the Health Department, the interim Health Director was not planning to present those. Those would need to come forward again when the board chose to start hearing the internal things that were not directly involved in the budget.
I'm comfortable with that.
I know you had discussed the, the Health Department with the restructuring that basically you're waiting until they had a new director hired to give us direction. Whereas the Mental Health Court and that, I, I guess I was thinking that that was done because the Board of Health didn't support it.
I don't know. The Food Policy Council has one out there too, and I think that, that might even be when they want to withdraw. Yeah, no, I, I, just trying again, it's a, just trying to get clarity on the document itself. So are we done with this for today?
I, I will say as a note, if I, if I can, um, we're slow or I certainly am slow to delete one of these projects until it, until it is, uh, very, very clear to us that, uh, that that is no longer a project that is being pursued. I, uh, on the Food Policy Council, I have reached out to, uh, the interim Health Director and, uh, I actually talked with the Chair of the, of that council too. And, and so there, uh, uh, that hasn't been resolved yet. So I, I am very slow, even, even though there, there probably are projects here that, that, that ultimately you may be, um, withdrawn before you have an opportunity to decide if you wanted to do that, or there may be some that will require some action by you. But we're slow to remove those from the list. They'll just stay there for just a little while. They may be in, in limbo, but, um, we're not anxious to do that until it's very clear from you, the board, that that's, that it should no longer be there.
I'm comfortable with that. So I think if we have a resolution for next week on what we agreed.
We've agreed on for the external support to public health response would be perfect.
Have consensus.
That's what, that's what we had on here is to work on the support to public health.
Correct, and that's page two.
The external. We've actually. Okay.
Ex, uh, Boards, Commissions and Supervisors update.
It doesn't actually say that. It doesn't say internal or external.
It does not say that.
So Boards of Commissions Updates is where you want to go next?
Yes. For the previous week. The DRA will be putting out their grant applications shortly. We'll be going to, uh, uh, DRA Board Meeting in, uh, Coralville. We leave on Thursday night. I'll be gone all day Friday, so I will not be at the Friday, uh.
Or UCC?
UCC meeting. 11 o'clock Wednesday is the railroad crossing, uh, information, uh.
When is that? I missed that. When is that? Wednesday, the?
At 11 AM.
At Zoom, I think.
3:30 today, there's a meeting at the Fire Training Center for the mass casualty discussion.
Does that mean?
Pardon?
What does that mean?
Uh, just discussion regarding, uh, mass casualty, uh, weapons of mass destruction, what we're going to do here. If something would happen. Yes, 3:30 to 5:00.
Are you there as a, a member of a, a board?
I would think you would be able to be there. I don't know, does Kevin and Ian attend that? I would think.
When do the fire departments?
There's no decisions being made. I think it's just, uh.
Yeah, if it's informative.
The discussion as to.
And then when do the fire departments meet? The volunteer fire EMS one? First Tuesday, second Tuesday?
Third. Have them on my list.
And ask Ed to find that out for me. I can't hear you.
Tuesday, March 15th was last meeting, so. Have to say it would probably be Tuesday, the 12th.
What time and where?
10th, uh, 7 o'clock is usually the fire meetings. Last one was in, uh, they usually, I think. Piast, I'll have to get a hold of cheese and then.
Talking about fire EMS meetings at night. Can you work with, get a list of location and date and time?
Yeah. That is about all I have. You have anything, Ian?
Yeah, when you turn the calendar, it all seems very long ago. Let's see here. Dubuque Area Substance Abuse Council is trying to meet, um, Anne. Williams is kind of trying to help them get that back. Substance Abuse Council, it's all kind of, um. She's working on that, and it, we are still looking for our, our strategic partners on that, or have yet to be defined. Childcare, um, Dubuque County Early Childcare Met, um, their fund, their fundraiser is. On April twenty-first, it is a gala from six to eight. If we would like to purchase a ticket and go, anyone? Would you like to do that? That'd be great. To help support the work they're doing there. They do not report any additional households. We had two so far this year, and we don't have any additional households. Getting the childcare programs up and going. Um, I am working with Abby. Um, on a childcare idea that's just beginning, um. Potentially Stonehill, Dave Lyons, so county rep on a collaborative board that meets. I don't remember, but so there's other childcare work happening. Abby has been the Dubuque County delegate on that. So I wanted to make sure we know what's happening there as well, about the childcare situation. So working on that. At the Eastern Regional Governing Board, I don't. There's five point nine million dollars that. Of financial opportunities to fund projects that the region will not be able to complete the projects. So five point nine million dollars of opportunity, the state advanced some money early this year and, um. Concerning crushing that we have need, but that is apparently we're making one last attempt. Heroically to try to find some additional ways to spend that money that's directly tied to. The, the, the region's strategic plan, but it is something that's going to be alarming to the community that money will go back to the state. As opportunities that we weren't able to take advantage of. Um, the, the reality is that. In part, the Medicaid reimbursement rate is so low, and that is the rate that the region pays. But there are people who are just passing on doing work with us. They feel it's business that if they take, you know, in, in the entrepreneur, we have always said it's bad business. You gotta know why you're taking bad business. It's gotta have some other reason, and we're out of enticement. There's, so. It's, and that's just not Dubuque County, that is throughout the whole region, so it's concerning. I guess a shout out to Dawn. Um, Jay, you would have gotten this as well, this communication from the legal women voters to participate in a forum on the twenty-third of May. And I need to know affirmatively if we're meeting it. Is that our night meeting in May? Or I, I have it as a day meeting, but then the following Monday is Memorial Day. So we need to know whether or not we're, we can participate in that forum.
Yeah, we had this issue, uh, last year as well, and how the board proceeded last year was, um, since the holiday fell on that Monday. It still is in May. The, the issue last time was that it was the first meeting in June. Now it is still the last meeting in May, so. I anticipate the thirty-first to be our evening meeting, which would be on that Tuesday. The issue last year is it fell into, it was on June first.
Jay, is that what you see too then? So that's.
Right there.
So to the auditor, there'll be two supervisors. Likely in the legal women voters forum, so.
Yeah, I don't, that's.
All right, speaking for ourselves, we will be, um.
You noted it, won the last nine debates there.
The veterans.
The debates were there?
The veterans meet every first Saturday. I was introduced on Saturday, the introduction went, we finally have our first elected official. So to all the other elected officials, and the veterans would welcome our presence on the first Saturday of the month from nine till eleven. Actually quite an enjoyable time. Should we have? I'm thinking, are we all going tomorrow night to Swiss Valley for the watershed meeting?
I plan to attend.
And then are we showing up on this, this Wednesday is the RTA board meeting? Do we have any forum issues there?
Had the meeting for tomorrow night, Anne?
Yeah, the, April fifth, right?
I do not have that. At a FEMA meeting? Oh, okay.
I know this is way ahead, but on, um, Tuesday, April nineteenth, the chamber is hosting a new executive meet and greet. And I think that with the pandemic, we have some new executives, I believe, Anne Cameron Williams. Who else has been hired during the pandemic? That would be, Ed, probably you should be going. And so we should, they'll try to coordinate that and have a county cohort there. We have high level people who were hired during the pandemic. I have.
Good.
Nothing to report unless you have questions for me.
I do, about conservation.
Oh, yeah?
Again, the UCC is, um, asking us to work, we're gonna start working on. Contact with county conservation boards about the, um, sales tax plan that may not pass out of the Senate this year, but. We, we are being told it will pass, and that's the, that's the loss of income to our roads, so, um. I guess you're on the board. Um, I don't, and you've said before to this group that it's a non-political board. But. We need to reach out to conservation to inform them of this and to ask them to be helpful to us, to make the case. That, um. We don't believe the county, the county conservation and associated organizations understand that by funding I-Will with. The removal of our law, of our local option sales tax levy, that we actually. It's hurting the county. The funding of that with those funds directly impacts county budget.
We'd lose about two point seven in our road use fund.
Last UCC call, it sounded like the, that local option sales tax piece was dead.
For this year, but it's coming back. Next year, so I wanted us to get with conservation boards to. Try to get the conservation boards in the right frame of mind that this isn't good for them.
And if that's the conclusion of our county conservation board, working with allied groups to understand. The Senate is feeling empowered about this issue because people who want to fund I-Will think it's, it's their only opportunity. But it hurts, certainly hurts Dubuque County. So, um. For me, it's, it's somewhat awkward because you're, you know, on that board, um. And I don't know if you want it, if you want to do that work about being involved in, in this.
Well, supervisor Potoff was at the last meeting, and you've been at various meetings, so I think in one of the supervisors can and should attend. And certainly if you feel it's important enough to be on the agenda, you should have direct access to Brian Preston to get things on the agenda or the Chair Board. Cause the UCC's discussed it and it's down in Des Moines, uh, doesn't mean I'm gonna advocate a certain position to the conservation board. That's not my role. Oh, education awareness, I'm open to, but I don't know, and I don't maybe agree with your position that this is the highest and greatest priority at this time. If it was in actively in the legislature, then yes, I think it'd have merit, but from what I heard on our Friday's call, it doesn't, so. Um, I guess I'd encourage you to, to bring your comments, since you own them, directly to the board. And, and please know that I would.
I have no issue doing that.
And I, and you're, and you will not step on my toes. You won't step on my toes. You won't step on my toes. You have, you have plenty of things tonight.
Let's have it be an agenda item, and Jay will be there, and you and I can be there, and the auditor will come into a conservation board meeting. We're going to.
I'm not requesting that, but I don't, I mean, do you really want it to be an official meeting like that? I mean, I don't, I mean, well, if that's what the level you think it needs to be, I would.
To talk to Brian on my own. About having it in the meeting and just talking to Brian, you know.
I'll do that as well then.
Pardon?
I'll just do that as well then, and then we can, we're gonna have these conversations again, and we'll see then if we want to take more formal position of a formal meeting.
See what happens as it moves through, you know. Other thing is, it's probably coming back next year, so. Okay, I think we are done with that. Again, you've been waiting patiently.
Sally, you get to open about like the. Like the Grammys who won? So. Pardon? Brought your Grammys last night, I didn't know half the people are three quarters of them. So full, but. Interesting.
How many sites were there in Kansas?
Again, with the, uh, election canvas for the special election on Tuesday, March. Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, yes.
I'm gonna sign these.
Uh, let's see, St. John's Vote Center. Katie Wethel, seventy-three, Carla Anderson, eighty-six.
Special, me, special election, Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, Fogarty Hall Vote Center, number two hundred. Katie Wethel, one hundred and eighty, Carla Anderson, one oh nine, write-ins five. Total count, two ninety-four.
Can you back sign one too?
No, not on that one yet. Then this one's for you, Anne, to read.
It's got a signature line for me there.
Oh, well, I just.
Says the special election for the city of Cascade. Um, special election, March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two, Creasing Thirty, which I think's the whole city of Cascade. Total votes, four hundred and four. Randy Keenlins, eighteen, Bill Hosh, one hundred and ninety-eight, Sue Nepper, one hundred and eighty-seven, one rated.
Were the absentee votes a total of one hundred and sixty-one votes? Kathy Wethel, one hundred and two. Carla Anderson, fifty-nine. Overvote one. For the Cascade Council. Thirty-six total votes. Bill Hosh, thirteen, Sue Nepper, twenty-three.
Motion to recess for five minutes?
No move for.
Motion, uh, a second to recess for five minutes. We will be back at one twenty-five for a close session.
Bye.